Got new computers all done by Kelly I T. So they should be ready to go with ours.
Great.
The new cars ready?
Yes.
They're waiting on radio?
Radio's done.
Okay.
Uh, we're on a list for radar certification. He need tell me that I could uh send it in. I had a call to abuse in the past, which is Radar Man Incorporated.
Yeah.
Is that Illinois? So he's not coming here anytime soon. Uh, it's forty five bucks to have it certified. So what we probably should do is take it out and send it to him. And have them certify off site and get it done unless we have an alternative to go with one more.
No.
I could never catch it. Oh. Twenty twelve needs new tires. So Patrick's one. Got us uh.
Do we? Best one.
Do we need four or do we just need?
I just give them all.
Yeah. Uh, thing is that we've not decided what to do with that vehicle at this point. We can't. It's Brad's favorite, so we can't let it uh fall apart. Uh, so we do need to probably take action and get those done. If the bid was for eight.
Twenty five fifty two.
Yeah. Really?
In hundreds of. You got it. You need that?
Yeah. I don't think we have that.
Then my team was presenting some stuff.
So we can see God a bit if we want to. That does seem pretty close.
So they offer the uh, just a question here like I don't know how anyone feels about bell tire, but does best one offer like the tire insurance in case we have a blowout or?
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Right.
Best answer is pretty good.
Cam.
Did you check with Bell or Best One?
I had not.
I think that's a pretty good price. Do we want to do a second quote?
I can give one of the laws.
So. So Goodyear Eagle Enforcer All Weather from Bell or two oh two. Bell is a thousand seventy four installed. Now they do matching and whatnot, but make motion to go with Best One.
I'll say.
So we have a motion from Matt, second from Tyler, to approve the purchase of set of four tires from twenty twelve. Tahoe. Uh. The max of well.
I'll call some enforcement still.
Yeah, I don't know the warranty process. It will be about any dollar amount, but a set of four tires from Best One. On paper?
I thought.
Any post? Motion carries.
We're down a couple lots for the radio. Got a guy that wants to start. Paperwork started on him, day shift guy. With part time. Yeah, four hundred nineteen entries in the system last month. Most shifts, most all shifts for every eight AM, three ten PM. Every day. Thirty three calls per service. Had twenty six traffic stops. The numbers are getting better. Gets better. Trick. Everything right now is going pretty well. If we're gonna have an issue. Tyler.
Who is the uh, who's new in this ring?
Michael Cook. Okay, nine percent.
Who is his dog too?
That's the board, I'm sure. Wouldn't say it'd be a bad thing. Please.
Yeah. Nobody started. Put Cajun back at twelve.
Right now. That's how we're. No. Feel free.
Oh, God.
Hmm, three buck, three brothers don't work.
Yeah. Yeah, you did that. Something else.
Yeah, not a lot. Going on work in a couple cases now at the flower shop and a pretty new place right down here. It's not the nineties anymore and people don't knock indoors. So there've been people in and out of the buildings. Actively working that to try to get the people up in there.
There are gold investigation went anywhere.
The gold investigation where the guy won two hundred eighty thousand dollars in gold. Uh, Lieutenant Ogden has chased that guy all the way down to San Bernardino, California. He's got his flight record, got car rental, got everything to trace back to the San Bernardino. So at some point, he may be in San Bernardino interviewing that guy. He fell broke with it. He's done really good jobs.
Cool. Do we need to go ahead and order a uh, computer stamp?
Sure.
Okay. You do.
You put it in. Did we ever give this?
True.
This was your?
Yeah. We have held off on firearms with the continued controversy around Sig.
I would say no on Sig.
No. I mean.
Definitely no.
There was, there was.
Yes.
I think that on Army Base.
Did they ever prove that it was?
Don't drop it.
They don't show up there, so.
Hit there. This one did, the one on Army Base, I think was, was it Fort Hood or? There's one woman that was walking down her driveway and just shot her in the foot. Yep.
Mike Gray says new meaning.
I'll keep mine though.
Both of my Sig's have not shot.
Yeah. How many, how many guys in Brown were there at Sam's funeral? All those six together, we had an extremely high percentage of probability there it could happen and it didn't. So for that, I mean.
I think the one I'm talking about, the officer had to check his weapon for some reason. He was going in somewhere. He checked his weapon and set it on the counter and it shot him.
Ricochet from the box or something?
No, I think he just like set it up on the counter and it was facing him so that they could grab it. Or some, I don't know how the process works, but it was like a big story. Sig released a statement about it and every.
I think we should go to Chicago. Spend the money.
Yeah.
Get something fancy, be done with it.
How much you pay?
Not. That's where I was and that's a whole other map, so. State legislature.
John, is it John?
No, he has something else like that. Um. The Tahoe situation. I had called and left a message. I've not heard back from the up better. So we're still at uh crossroads with how we go next from that. I hope Michael might be here to guide us on our next step there. Um. But we still have twenty.
Do you want to proceed and turn the page and go to the other? You've really got an opportunity. And then just.
Yeah.
And potentially pursue legal action for you to go down.
Yeah, I think that's where we could think.
I agree with that.
I mean, that would be stupid, right?
Right. I mean, it's usable now other than traffic stop because the radar is not certified. It quite often says you're going a hundred. And I guarantee you I wasn't. Um, so I think it's just got some sort of reflectivity issue or maybe it's not been. He could have just plugged it in, never uh tuned tuning forks, checked it, whatever. But if, if we had to use it, we had other units down, we could temporarily. Uh, lights are good, radio's good. Lights work, I'm considered good. Uh huh. Yeah, for the most part. It's pretty close.
Thank you.
I never heard back from the Buller App people about policy on that.
They sent one to you.
Yours was generic though, right?
I figured it would be something we could start off with.
They, they have them. And so I want to get one from them to plug in and make.
I think it was off their lips.
Oh, yours was?
I think so.
I thought yours was AI generated.
Nope. I copied and pasted AI and then wait, I'm not gonna take him to something else.
Yeah, I, I don't remember. That's still something we need to figure out. Um, we need to send somebody to trainings for it. We technically do not have a uh instructor. I don't think anybody's carrying them or using them at this point, which is for policy. Okay, I guess, but we spent a lot of money on, we need to get them uh, get them used. Same on Bodycam. I don't know that they're getting used much. So we need to try to push that a little bit on using the things we're paying for. Uh, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, but probably a couple of things to add to the list of workings. Um, ordinance violations. Again, I wish Michael was here. In order to have that fully adjudicated by November thirtieth, I don't know what that timeframe looks like. But we're obviously pushing get close to that, I'm guessing. Um. Do we need to review any potential violations we could?
Yeah.
Right. Push. I know several of properties has gotten cleaned up that we were looking at. I don't know about the one over here on Penn, if it's, because it got cleaned up now.
Meridian. Meridian.
Which one?
Meridian, that term. Well, that house, that I went to.
Remember what I created that work order on? The ones that I had.
Eleven?
Almost finished. Rachel. It green, be very. Bring the bird. Yeah, we're
reading the one right over here. The old uh, so Sharon in Meridian, that one. Get finished. I know they, they did part of it. Okay. So anyway, looking at that, just trying to get back in that money again.
I just didn't know if we need to vote or anything like that because.
Not until we sign it.
Yeah, because I didn't know if we decided or all claiming yet.
Yeah.
So that's what I normally did over there. It's waysy, they would tell me when they'd vote. And then you'd vote and then tell them when they announced or whatever we did, yeah. Well. I wouldn't give them anything.
Also seems to be a lot of uh speeders on Broadway. Send them to the new liquor store.
One Corvette. One Corvette.
There's more than that.
Oh.
There's a lot more than that. What? So where they're in great, they're ready to have a parking. Probably maybe, I don't know. I know they're pulling out their squealing tires and.
I don't think we ever discussed it, but um Corey did get uh an OWI here in town. I think the call had come in from county. And he ended up getting behind it, stopped the guy over on
Sharon?
Ended up taking him to jail and unfortunately it was a child in the car as well, so it's kind of a mess, but it's okay. So it does happen even in even the little sweetest. Anything else for Brad?
Couple. Um. So I messed up and I ordered a passenger plate. Particularly.
For the twenty four.
I have reordered municipal plate. So, so I guess I would cut. Uh, any luck in talking between us or not?
Yes, that's been a big plus. We should. And even E verified.
Then, no, you said, I, I said we're down a couple officer, but I I know we all know why you're down officer, but we should mention it for the record. That was sent, but I'll lost Sam. I think everyone knows that fast way of twenty eight. Yeah, so since our last. Lost him and then Will is still out only. Roger's been picking up ships and bars and go be school zone and do many things. Didn't want that many days. They said he'll do it for now.
Very good.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I have trapped several raccoons at my house and I've been taking them out to the reservoir. And someone stopped me and told me that I better not let the D N R catch me because that's against the law. Isn't it? And what do I do with them?
Yeah, mother.
I hope you have a D N R.
It probably is.
It probably is. I guess I thought.
I'd have to ask the editor. It probably. Yes.
We've not gone right and run wild down on the in the forests. Well, it seems like a weird thing.
Drop them on the road outside of the D N R property. And it's a county issue, not a state issue.
I think. So I'll talk to his neighbor. He said, get John there now.
What are they telling you is illegal to the the, the, whatever they're saying is illegal, but they're, they're putting them on their property or they're trapping?
Well, I think that I was releasing a whole lot of treasures, I guess, is what I say, yeah. I can't, I just can't dump metal private property, right? I mean.
That's probably not, that's probably not, but it's supposed to.
Well, I hope I got them all, so. Okay.
Anything else?
No.
Thanks, Brad. Uh, great. Sit down then.
I gotta give it up some, I gotta do it. Process. Well, we're getting in, start the asphalt, but we'll be getting that off. That's their schedule.
Tight line.
Yeah.
When it's a time, it's a miracle, right?
It's a new box, all sucks. But yeah, we went around and marked out all the rubber. Sewer lines where it's gonna cross the roads and everything that way were located.
Then
did you guys have to do patchwork in prior to, or did you pretty much like go as small?
Or just uh stone chips them? So just to kind of keep keep us.
Is there a cost involved?
Yeah, because we had to go iron line, but it was minimal because I was trying to do the least expensive thing we could. Everybody kept calling me asking and so I was putting some sort of chips in there. That wasn't gonna mess up anybody's heart and then.
Hey, Jock. Are they sending out notifications to promoters? That are not our true.
They're, they are supposed to. It's not us, it's them.
Right.
But I haven't, you know. I drove this, drove the project, there's no activity. Even a barricade of any type, comb, nothing. No, they literally said they're um bringing stuff in tomorrow. And that's all I've heard. So, so I'd be interested.
Well, if that's the case, what's, what's their fine up to already?
Well, so that threshold we discussed was ninety percent. So ninety percent completion. So until we reach that point. Still, it's still gonna.
Still tacking off.
These are something. Next, thanks. We were going pretty much. At least maybe they.
I thought it was the twenty fifth.
Okay.
Hundred days.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand and miles.
Yeah. Interesting. But Ed and I went down there, we put a couple cones around the Kelly Drive was stationed. Because I seen they had as their stating. I told him to play it. So, but whatever. At least we got our butts covered, they can read all of those. Help us out with this.
We'll get that paid for.
I don't know. I was getting ready to ask you that because I, that is a question mark on my.
So if you recall, Indiana, Michigan ran over our lift station lid there at uh Kelly Drive.
I can not be seen. We couldn't try to see, I seen this place test. Yeah, we've not received anything. Well, we haven't, we haven't replaced that yet. I fixed it for the time being.
That was just a fix.
Um, that was actually for the Kelly Drive, for no short word. And so this one, I just prepared so that we're good with time being. But we do need to replace that lid. So. But yeah, and then uh had to order UV bulbs, mirror violation, couple equal line numbers this last month. Uh, I had two of my bottom balls, bulbs on both banks go out. And all of a sudden my number hit way up. Well, I only have them that'll get you back. So usually those come in prepared. So if you don't have one, then both of them won't work. And uh, so of course I went and I got some flooring and for second days, we coordinated it, decor. So that way it was at least getting done. But uh, we still had those I numbers for I think three or four days. So, but we are back working order now. I had to order six bulbs. Just get within their ordering limit. And uh, so we had free spare stuff. So that way we're ready for that because the other ones were placed last year. So.
How, how is that? Or do they like? So there, was there lifeline or lifetime essentially?
Can't remember the hour range. They have the same type of hour. I think it was five thousand or six thousand hours.
We only run them half a year, right?
Yeah, well. Eight months.
Yeah.
Something like that. But uh.
Is it something that like with having the, what I'm getting at is like having three bulbs, should we have like six just in case?
There's eight total, so like we could have maybe order some more here.
Yeah.
So, but we'll go through it as the season ends. We go through everything, kind of check it all out.
Yeah.
But that literally like happened out of nowhere.
Maybe else.
It's one of those things. But uh, like I said, it's all back up and running. Good to go there. Um. We had the shifter cable on the dump truck brake. So it wasn't allow us to go all the way to park. It was kind of a weird situation because the brake was underneath the driver. Underneath the water. So it was in between them. And I didn't know because all it was, was just a little bit of cheating. It was broke and it would allow the thing to move like that. So when you adjust it, it wouldn't go back up in the park. So I had to replace the whole thing. And uh, so yeah, it's working like it should now. Uh, re- replace the batteries on the truck because we get in it and it was not starting. So I'm hoping now that all that's done, we should be good for twenty while. The only last thing is their original tires are still on. So I have brassiere tires on that because they're dry cracked right around. And you don't want them to blow out.
I'm sure it's not.
Just because it's sitting. Yeah. With twenty six thousand miles, yeah, it's just. So. So yeah, we need to figure out when we don't do that with that before we start salting this way. So. But that is again, that's the one too, so. Like that's pretty decent price.
Do we need the warranty on those? You think? Those are original tires, right?
Right, I know. But we actually use it more than they did. So I would say probably would going to I M I. So that way we have it covered.
Just buying two at a time, so we don't have to put insurance on two of them. You can pick which two. Oh, it's this one. Work the system.
Then uh, I got price for the addition on the shop. So that we can house the these cars in all of our projects as well.
It's already been approved, right?
No, I brought it to you once because it was a a lean two style, just a rope basically over. This is a cold storage type rolling. So that we can put our bucket truck inside or whatever else. Plows in the summertime can go inside underneath the roof year round. And then the Salzburg can be underneath it. So basically everything you could see outside of the shop there could be inside of storage. Some sort of um. But yeah, they uh twenty five thousand eight hundred twenty nine dollars. That's from the the Amish. Um. But it seems like a pretty good price and that's for a uh twelve foot overhead door. Um, so that we could get the truck in and out, obviously. And uh no windows. Stone inside. Then you will put the lights in when we get to it. So that's basically just for the ship.
How big did you say it was?
I didn't say how big it was. It was thirty by, it's the door, twelve foot by fourteen.
Yeah.
So it'd be fourteen in the square.
Yeah. Did you do that on?
Um, they did. I didn't. Who's good? Yeah.
Yeah.
Only good we go for. That's all I've got so far. So I just wanted to see if there was something, if we make it, we can get to it this morning, I guess. I just want to see if it's something we want to get another quote.
If I may, we don't have the money right now.
Okay.
Until we get this rig study done, the wastewater plant is running a bit of a check. Even with taking out the engineering the feed. So the fees we paid so far. I mean, we could come up with the money with the wastewater plant itself.
Right, right.
Expensive.
Yeah. It's just some. And then the dog park sidewalk the bench been installed, I don't know if anybody's been having to see it. But yeah, I think it looks good, Andrew came. Uh did sidewalk, looks really good. John's got the bill for that one there, so. Yeah, I ended up being very fat on it.
I did replace the. Basement for those concrete, once it was poured, but the bench wasn't.
Yeah.
When it was the day it was poured.
Yeah, it always good. It's a panel with that, we mentioned that at about two o'clock, that's where the only shade is right there on the bench. So. You know, it's obviously not gonna be. Catching water on it. So. But I'm hoping that when we do the asphalt that they can do that parking area as well. It'll be that, we did put some gravel in the parking area as well. They can beat up with the sidewalk. So um.
Tyler, you wanna get a motion to officially approve that sidewalk project?
Yes, um I make a motion to um. Do we want to make the motion to? For CCI to work? Okay, that's what I was wondering, um make a motion to uh CCI to put concrete. And at the dog's works, since they're go up for. It's great. Yeah.
Motion from Tyler, second from Matt, who approved the sidewalk for dog park from CCI for thirty five hundred dollars. Approximately, all favor? Any opposed? That was uh May from Warren and Travis. Yay from Kyle, Tyler and Matt. Leave the bench.
Um I want you to get a uh. Yes, a quote on lawnmower stuff to please get them switched out. Okay, and so these are the new, you got that one too?
Yes, so we previously reviewed the pricing on them, we did some checking and uh. These ended up being solid prices, the lease offer that they put forward, it's similar to what we did by tractor. Five years ago, four years ago.
Three years.
It's a three year lease. Uh technically, it's a four year lease, it's three years of five thousand and eighty eight dollars, ninety seventy seven. Annualized payment, year four is a one dollar.
Buyout.
Buyout. Uh so total price being fifteen thousand two hundred something. That is still trading in our own two units. I believe it's same price structure and just includes the lease option.
Yep. These are the uh. Basically upgraded models, the same mower we have, but they've got suspension to wheels, which is the air tire. The suspension for an end. So it'll ride a lot better for. So yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of.
Now trading the old ones in.
Yes. They give sixteen four hundred or. I figured that was a pretty good price, they got right at eight hundred hours on it. One's been given a bit with the charging system because uh we've went through two the stators. So they actually went there and looked at it, they didn't see anything wrong, but figured it's a good time to. Shift it off.
What's what's the difference in these books?
Oh, it might be. But yeah, like you said, I make the the price quotes for the yearly payment, maybe about fifteen. Might swing one way or the other, because that was just an estimate for it, we just. Put it together for short period. So. I was like, I told him I needed it at the meeting tonight, I actually got it two weeks ago, I told him I needed it. But yeah, so that's uh. And I think Ronnie's mower down here. I think it's right at eight hundred hours as well, so. They kind of consider a thousand hours. As a hundred thousand on the bar.
I'm near the shop for the handle being service, you know, the two, like the oil changers and stuff like that.
I'll have to ask them, sure.
Believe whatever, looking at it, they would, they definitely service, or if anything happened, like. Mechanical wise, they would, it was all covered.
Right, yeah.
That'd be my suggestion, so use it.
Right.
That's when we do oil changes on just three of our experts.
Was there a difference?
There's another price, but the quote idea is the same, so I don't know what's. Yeah, it's the exact two same motor. Is there a sales tax on the one?
Oh, so this is, this is the thirteen seven, this one here?
Yeah.
This is the, this is on this cord, right? And then he's, and he's got it times two, makes it twenty seven, right, then you're trading in twelve eight. Which brings you down to the fourteen, that's cool, so this is just the. This is the pricing for the model.
Gotcha.
Right? Makes sense, that's why. Because it was a little confusing.
Yeah, yeah.
I was like, I knew it was all legit, I wouldn't have worried about it.
This is, this is just a summary. This double plus two three. So this is the actual. If we're trading in our twenty sixteen, we're we're trading in two twenty sixteen for.
Yeah, it looks like the same model.
Yeah, a different years. Is it, that's what I thought yours too, but.
Ones are different.
Twenty twenty five, right?
One's a twenty one and one's a twenty five. But he's giving, they're giving us the same price we made.
Do all of them have the twills on them?
No, those are actually.
So basically with the trading. You're never getting them free.
John, money and?
Yeah, we have. In in parts itself.
Is it to our benefit to split it up into lease payments?
That's what I would, I would do, because. Your maintenance said anything that goes wrong with it, it's covered as long as they're in the lease.
I don't. Listen, I can't say that for sure.
That's, that's how it was.
Because I think they're just giving a. Finance option. Basically, so they can hold it. The lease whatever. This is just a way for them to finance.
Which is gonna have some warranty on it anyway, it's gonna make the oil changes.
Yeah.
Patrick's reason for John Deere over X mark for some others, he knows how to work on them, so. So with that information. I'd accept a motion to. Enter the lease agreement with John Deere Financial for the two new tractors. So. Motion Warren, we need a second still.
For what, yeah, I think the in- including the interest rate on these leases is probably. Less than two percent.
Motion from Warren, second from Travis. To. Enter the lease agreement with John Deere Financial for two new mowers. All favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Well, Patrick.
Anything that doesn't cost money?
Well, it did at one point, but. I got the most of the pavilion out here. I remember. So just uh I got four corners to do, that's been really hot lately. I got a little overheating Tuesdays. Yeah, took half the day off yesterday.
This is brutal as well.
Yeah, and I didn't realize I was that hot, but yeah. Paid for it that night, but anyways, so um so all we have left to do is the. Little bird boxes on the corner, that's what it's called, it's not really a bird box, but uh. So I just gotta frame that in and then staple up electrical wire underneath where the lights go. So.
Cause I can't remember if he was here, but we discussed, I think at one point in time, putting lock boxes on. Outlets, the the town. Yeah, I wasn't here, you were on vacation. But yeah, that's something I want to look into more.
There's a sign that says you can use them like for traveling through.
Yeah, I mean, traveling through, I don't have a problem with it.
Oh, you mean the ones up high?
No, like out on the trail and.
Yeah, and others, like people ride their bikes, they stop and try to shoot up. And that's all moved, I think, to. Do that, it's just my opinion.
Yeah.
But the ones up high, I can see them. So was a gentleman that he used to go over there and play on his uh. Laptop and he would charge his dialysis machine while he was doing that, so there's another.
I'm not talking about like the pavilion, I'm talking, I think there's one like. There's flower bed or some three that is just out there.
So yeah, I can see that, because those are mainly for like a vendor type thing.
Yeah.
And so those I can see. Lots, but the ones underneath. This is fine.
We also just find out if they have an individual breaker.
Breaker, yeah.
Doubt it.
So it's me, I'm there.
So yeah, I doubt it as, but I can look into it, they might actually already have. The tabs for locking them out, so I'll check into it.
Just so they're not, just so their extension cords aren't pre-ended, you know, our playstations and white fire routers.
Bikes, bikes and stuff like that, I don't, yeah, exactly. And that's why there's ones up in the pavilion, so I can set us.
Now, do we have a meter in that? System? Just the parks area.
I don't know.
Yeah, we do pay electricity. Well, it comes. The bills for the lights are consolidated. So it lists, so we've got a six paid, five or six paid.
And so those, those outlet series likely don't have their own meter.
I wouldn't think so.
Say we could look at.
Yeah.
Use differences if we will, okay.
That's not a huge concern, just something we've discussed, but here.
Yeah, yeah, just check it out.
Yeah. But yeah, other than that, I don't. So I have about this.
So.
We need to make a motion.
We're gonna do that now or wait? Done. Thirteen fifty for dump truck tires. That's something.
It's gonna tighten.
An hour later.
We're not rushing around to the player.
I make a motion, we replace the tires on the dump truck through.
Thirteen fifteen.
I think that was gonna change if we had the warranty and then the tax comes off too, right?
I without gave the number of that.
Can't see in your eyes. I'll, I'll second the motion. I'll, I'll second the motion.
Motion from Matt saying tire for purchase dump truck tires. From best one. All favor? Alright. Any opposed? Motion carries.
We did it faster. Yes.
John can send you with the credit card with this points off of that, uh. Nice transaction.
There you go.
Guys, give me a holler.
Alright, that's all I have.
He didn't change oil, that's true.
Or, or I could just, we'll go up there and call him off.
Sure. We'll go back to open public forum. Marcus.
Stand for this one. See me any better, but.
Who's that?
Um. Alright, little update on the, the part show. Every, all the awards are gonna be, they have everything, everything came in, they're gonna start building them on Monday. We were, I think, um, it's twenty six total awards. Um, we had, I think, twenty two sponsors. So what I did was some of the ones that did the extra, uh, hundred dollar donation. I went on and doubled some of them up, that way we don't have to keep waiting around for other people to be at it. It's time to move past that. And they're gonna start de-ingraving on Monday. Uh, but they, they should have everything ready, hopefully by Thursday or Friday. Um, I brought, um. My mom, my sister, and Jess is my girlfriend, mainly because we just got done eating dinner, but. Um.
Probably birthday money.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, just trying to get here as soon as I could, but, um, no. I know we haven't really discussed. We're gonna need volunteers. I don't know, we never made it that far.
Really, well. What do we need volunteers for?
Well, it's twenty dollars to enter, so somebody's gonna have to collect the money.
I would suggest that either be you or someone friendly.
I'm gonna be probably doing others.
Well, yeah, so I mean, just.
Hey, still, I was thinking of coming up with three judges. That way there's an odd number.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, like I have a knowledge of car, it obviously needs to be somebody with the good knowledge of cars. I don't wanna be, I don't wanna be biased, there's obviously gonna be a lot of people here that I know. And some of my friends are sponsors and whatnot. You know, I know a lead, I know S and S, I know, know, so, I don't know. You know, I still need to come up with a judging sheet to do points, we need to do, um. Vehicle names and, and numbers for when we do the judging. Um. And basically, like I said, just somebody take the money and do we have all the vendors? Did we end up getting any extra vendors or anything?
Oh, I'm.
Is the parking crew, I guess I have a lot of questions, is the parking, does whatever they, E M, EMS, that what it was? E M A, E M A, whatever the parking people are, yeah, are they ready and notified and? When that's. Cause we need to. Need to do all that.
Cause we.
I don't know. I've done a lot, some of the stuff is out of my hands, I feel like that's something that you guys should be responsible for. Man, I've done a lot, and I don't have a problem with that, you know, it's my idea.
Can we get some fire guys to?
Oh, yeah, I'll order some fire guys, cause they're, they're competitive, so. Uh, I'll get some volunteers there, I can.
My brother has worked with the Gilead Car Show the last several years, and so he said he's willing to do registration and take fees and.
As long as we have somebody that, yeah, cause, I mean, you guys know me, I try not to get involved with the money, so. Um, yeah, as long as we have somebody available to do that, we're gonna need, might need people to park, help park cars, I mean. Just little things like that. Gonna need. I don't know if you. Um. I don't know who's gonna be on duty that day here. You know, we're gonna have an extra, you know, ambulances, you know.
We can, we can, I'll, I'll make sure we have an ambulance service, even if I have to have one come over whenever down, but.
Yeah. Yeah, but some of that stuff, you know, like I was saying, you know, that's kinda like out of my hands. Maybe it's board members, some of that stuff you guys should be responsible for.
Under twenty thirty, right?
I mean, I've gotten all the, um, I know at night, and that's another thing, we never did really discuss, um. I guess it came up. But it was never finalized on the layout of how we're gonna do all this, did we?
They're just parking them down, so down the strip show, right? Yeah, I mean, it's what you want, bro, this is, this is Yeti's Threads Car Show.
Well, I know, but it's not about just.
No, I know.
It's to benefit all of us, it's just, it's just my idea, you know, I wanted to do, like I said, when I first came here, I wanted to do this for a few years and. I mean, I appreciate the opportunity, I really do, you guys, and. I think it's, you know, I try to keep our merchants in mind. You know, as far as, you know, I came to you guys first. Before I even opened up, you know, bringing other vendors in, and that was mainly because I wanted it to benefit our town. You know, there's nothing much here for us. But you know, I had trailside treats in mind, Sweetser Cafe. Um, I tried to keep all the, the awards local, but unfortunately, unfortunately, we don't have enough merchants. You know, to have done all twenty six awards, and that's why I opened it up. And, you know, hopefully, you know, this is, you know, we may only have twenty five people here, we may only get twenty, I don't know, we may get two hundred. But, you know, hopefully this is a good starting point for, uh, us to move forward, and, um. You know, we're just gonna have to see how it goes, you know, and, and like I said before, you know, my little brother's a fireman, so I wanted to have all the proceeds go towards our local fire department.
Yeah. So the, I know you mentioned window stickers for the cars.
Well, they just, we just need to have a piece of paper.
Yeah.
That just says name, your vehicle number, that's normally how they do it, and then name. And model.
Yeah.
That way, when we're judging, you can just say, hey, you know, you can look it over, you know, you can write down, like, I've thought about coming up with, you know, like maybe a point system for different categories. And then what you would do is you would go through and, you know, and I, really, honestly, I don't know how many cars are gonna, you know, obviously some aren't gonna need, um. I hate this word, it's looking lame. Some may not need the time of actually being judged, you know, I don't know. Because to sit.
Other cars may not be as nice.
Yeah, but I don't wanna worry about that, I mean, but honestly, it is what it is, I mean, I don't know. And that's what I'm saying, you know, like, I don't, and I don't wanna be the only judge, but I mean, if I have to, I will, and I, I mean, I won't be biased about it, you know, I mean, I'd be. But I don't feel that, I don't feel comfortable doing. Because it's, this is, you know, kind of my ideas, so, I feel like I would. Be showing, or somebody might think I'm showing favoritism, you know, not.
You know anybody from Knight Street Gang?
Yes.
Thinking about it for you.
Lee Wright, Lee Lloyd.
See, somebody from the car club, wanna come out and. Do that.
Well, I had a guy from Gas City, he's friends with the dudes that do Ducktail, um, he didn't wanna do it. I've asked somebody else and they didn't go either.
What time we do, uh, what volunteers will start showing up?
Probably, um.
Eight.
Eight, well, cause I know at night, talk to me, okay, so. Do we have, do we have driver rights?
Yeah, it should be.
Can I use this so we can all like, you know, you can take it down after next week, but. So.
Over, do you want? Green.
What time, what time do you want?
Two.
Two.
Well, I was thinking doing awards around two, so everyone have case, cause usually after that, everybody books.
Yeah.
So.
They might be dead.
I can see that. So, eighteen's here.
Give you some options.
What road is that right there? Ben. Let's just say.
While you're drawing that, I'm just gonna ask, you said volunteers, we need them for to collect money, park cars, what else did you say? What money you park, that's probably we don't have it.
Marketing.
Yeah, park, yeah, park cars. Spectator parking also.
Yeah.
I don't know how we're gonna do that yet either.
Spectator parking will be pretty much.
For here?
Yeah. They can fit on the gravel lot or, um.
And we need signs too for that.
Park, park by the.
Yeah, like, um, you know, like, you have to have one on eighteen that says car show this way, and then you have to have. You know, spectator parking over here, car, entries this way.
Yeah, Marcus, so there's a bunch of stuff upstairs that we can go through, that's from the Sesquicentennial.
Okay.
Yeah, something like that parking or.
Perfect. Awesome.
My thought is what we'll do is we'll just block traffic here at. Oh, that's true, it's all. The little one, does Ken cross over?
Right here in front of.
Yeah, the real Texas Cafe.
Does it have a name?
It is, uh, I can't remember it either, cause it's only at one. What, this one?
Nope, no, it's, no, it's straight across from.
Oh, right here, is it, no, it's Miller.
Miller.
Yep.
It's not even on Google.
It's on, it's on that map right there, totally been mapping here.
Oh.
No, there it is, yeah, Miller, so we'll, we'll move traffic.
I have no idea.
Yeah, Miller, should change it to.
Okay, so, law parks here. Should be that grass lot, let's say these are. Okay, so what I had in mind, like I s. I want the motorcycles to be up here. Because.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Yeah.
It's smaller, they can whip in and out. And they can kinda pull them in along the backside, and then people can still walk through here. Um, this is the parking that's this way, and you got that road, whatever. Um, yeah, just Ignite wants to be here.
So they essentially right out front.
Yeah, they were the only ones that asked me about putting up a booth. And I was like, well, you know, you're the first ones, I guess you can have that first spot.
So that's, that's what puts up right there, uh. I mean, in the trailside area.
There's, I mean, if they're doing a ten by ten booth, there's probably area in the grass, you push vendors back behind the sidewalk. So you can pull your, your first tent next to the pavilion, kinda behind the bike repair station.
Well, I mean, I don't care.
And if we had somebody else that wanted one in their space.
Somebody to see.
Yeah.
Nobody really asked, I mean, I was gonna maybe set one up, but. I'm trying to print t-shirts. But I don't know if.
I, I think we should start parking cars on the asphalt here.
Yeah, they go this way.
All the way down, if you have enough cars that we can get it in the grass, then I'll park that.
Yeah, then this can be the.
Overflow.
Yeah, and this is the overflow.
We get a ton of cars, they can park in that. Patrick, would you mind, or I, I'll, I don't, you don't have to do it all the time, I just wanna make sure there's no obstructions in that big field.
Other than bumps.
Yeah, there's some bumps, I can get that, but.
Yeah, pretty much. We have the circus.
Yeah, that's just, that's, there might be some lion down there.
Could they? Lion, lion paddling.
It's actually really clean down there once in a while, to be honest.
Yeah, I, I like that too, I think Kyle's idea of putting the vendors in the grass on this side of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Would be better, wouldn't take up parking spaces.
Want a lot of the people too, um, and obviously they're older folks, they're gonna wanna sit in the grass, so it's not hot. And we got that, you know, on the other side of the bike path, they can sit on that side.
Um. We got for. Or we'll, we'll circle back to what I was gonna say, for food vendors, we got the cafe.
Right, I'm, I'm trying to get O B's or Los Morays to come out, it's the way to interact from them.
By a.
Match guy. Whatever wagon. I'm not, I'm not gonna say it on camera, but, uh.
So Los Amores.
And O B's are the two I've asked, but I've not got confirmation from them, Ole Donuts will be here, so. So I need anyone.
Always somewhere.
Especially for.
So you can check with them. I mean, they have, uh, top of truck in Congress every Tuesday.
Esbra has the best stock.
If Los Amores is gonna be here, we don't.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Just another option, yeah.
Imagine what these trucks. I know a lady that does like lemon shakeups and stuff, she's not already booked.
I mean, hopefully.
I read about the Kona Ice, the shaved ice people, they're booked up this year, but they said they'll let them know for next year.
Yeah.
I assume Trailside's gonna be open, right?
Yeah, they, she said they were gonna open early.
That's another thing, it's like I didn't really wanna impede on them, but I was like shaved ice and ice cream's a little different, but it's still. Yeah, it'd probably be better.
Literally what we're gonna have, I'd rather have two food vendors that are overwhelmed, than four food vendors who.
I agree, and it keeps it, you know.
We got Holy Donuts, uh, Sweetser Cafe, and then.
Trailside.
Trailside, and then possibly Los Amores or O B's, and. That would be five.
I would say both, so we'll see.
Okay. Yeah. Marketing. Who does the? Howard, do you do the Facebook posts?
We all have access.
I had somebody that actually paid the hundred. And, um, they had, yeah, but one person in, in, in. Uh, general, he, he was like, I haven't seen any posts.
Yeah, but it's the, it's probably what they call out. Yeah.
And all of them should be mentioned, that gave the extra fifty for the donation, I feel, and that's what they paid for.
Well, we, is that something the town needs to do or?
Yeah, okay, I can't do it, man, I can post it on my thing, but the town.
On ours as well. Post it on our page, for the Sweetser Switch, and then the town of Sweetser can share that. Or something.
Yeah, oh, it has to be approved.
No, no.
But you create, you create the post through Sweetser Switch Show, the town can then go through and share that post. Broadening.
Well, I've already done that, like, I've been doing updates on it like crazy.
Specific to the, uh, marketing sponsors though?
Negative.
Okay.
Oh.
Give them a shout out on there.
Yeah, we need to go online or ask them, but usually you can Google their logo. Online, uh. Save, save it to your phone real quick, right? Uh, throw a post up on Facebook, I'm, I'm having it on there with you too, so I can tell, I just, that's why, that's actually why I asked you for that list of sponsors.
Yeah.
That you sent to me, so that I could start posting those, but I know some of these guys.
Facebook. No way.
I had the airstrip attack, and I've been fully focused on that, but, uh, some of these companies don't have logos, so we can't really. Do anything with that, other than mention them, maybe tag them and like send the Facebook post or something. But yeah, we can, we can put those out, that's why I asked you for the list of like sponsors, and so we can do like the. You know. Best in show sponsor presented by, who, who, do you remember?
S and S.
Yeah, S and S, uh, Paint Body, right? Throw their logo up on there, uh, and then that gives them some publicity on our page, and then the town can go on and share them, as we'll do.
I will do that then, um, okay, so I'm trying to think of anything else, cause we're not gonna have another meeting, right?
Well, the three of us, four of us, whatever, could get together this next.
Yeah, we're gonna, we, especially get like a site plan layout, like even if we need state areas or whatever.
You do or?
Yes, you know, whoever's.
Gonna be involved. And then that way we can figure out. We need volunteers to collect money, we got that, we think under control, right?
Yep.
Wouldn't hurt to have in that extra.
I will help with anything that you need.
Yeah, that's why I kinda brought down, so they kinda know what's going on.
Yeah. And then we need volunteers to park spectators and show cars.
Spectators, we'll make it clear enough that you can't drive anywhere around Main Street, parking is over here.
Yeah.
Maybe. People should be smart enough to just go park a car. We could even, have we, new houses by using that law?
Says a car shirt, car insurance salesman.
What's that guys do with getting permission from new house?
So yeah, we we definitely, it feels like a little committee need to meet.
I'm excited, I don't know about you guys.
I was really excited, I was like.
Yeah, I'm getting excited. I just. The work been really nice, that's another thing I can post on there too.
I think you did.
That yes, uh, it's engraving a Monday.
And it okay, I have like a brand area of it or whatever, cause.
So when, when do you guys wanna meet next week?
We need P A system or something.
Oh, yeah. I think we should at least bring a Bluetooth. Speaker, oh, and I'm gonna need a freaking microphone too.
Yeah.
I'll check it out.
You got you got P A in your.
Yeah, because I might have to do awards. Let's see, that's another thing too, is I'm gonna, I don't mind like calling out people's names for the awards, but I'm gonna have to have somebody hand them out.
Yeah. What day, what day you wanna meet next week? Free Monday through Thursday? Each day?
Every day, meet Monday, meet Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I don't, I mean, I don't.
It don't have to be long meetings, no.
I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, honestly, like until and and I, we can pick up the awards, but obviously we're gonna have to bring them here. I know you guys are probably nine to five every day. You know, I work for myself, so I'm able to go get them. But we need to bring them over here, they'll probably be done Thursday or Friday, that's another thing.
I'm open any day next week, we can meet multiple days, we wanna do like. Tuesday and Thursday.
Yeah, do like Tuesday, see what's up, and then.
Friday night, we can go through and put signs and whatever else.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we need to do that the night before.
Very early the next morning. There there was, Marcus, from my experience, there are going to be things we're going to forget.
Honestly, I'm just doing this off the top of my head anyway, I mean, I just had to list the sponsors.
I've been running the airstrip attack for ten years, and there's something I forget every year. Shoot, I didn't bring extra chairs or. That's another thing, we need to make a post saying like, if you would like to come and.
Where's registration gonna be?
That's another, well, I was thinking we could do that right there by the rest, all that right there by the rest room.
Set it up in the pavilion, we can move the. ables chain down.
Yeah. Yeah, P A and then do the registration and all them.
Patrick's is laughing.
Thank you for coming up the idea, getting things started. Get the ball rolling, we'll play on Tuesday at seven. Yes.
Yeah.
I just appreciate the opportunity, I mean, like when I first came out here, you know, I was like, I had this idea for a few years, I just. I never pitched it, so.
Yeah. There's always a little rubber, but, I mean, I think we've got all the bases covered, we've got a basic idea of what we're doing. You know, uh. You know. We're just, the the holes on the trail, we'll have to lower that down this side, that's another, those this the little details that. We're gonna forget.
Well, we lowered this. You mean the the one poles?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, bikes are called.
Yeah, they they want.
I would think it'd be better.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's wide enough to.
Yeah.
We're good then. Yeah. I think, I think we're good to go. We're ready.
Nobody else has any? You know, you go to shows with me, so.
There's always more, but we we got a lot of other business we gotta get. Tuesday at seven.
Okay.
And we'll.
Yeah, we'll be back Tuesday.
Okay, grind it out.
Alright. See you guys on Tuesday. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcus.
Alright, continuing business, our. Show and dance on for us. Well, we talked about putting one along the back, but we can do it. Over there as well.
I just, I just who found out like three days ago.
If you like to copy. You have extra help here.
I'm gonna try to get some people, yes.
They're only gonna want doughnuts.
All of them. I was like, yeah.
Oh, I gotta work, I just know it. That should be that top five. You know, but we don't have, yeah. Okay.
I mean, good thing I brought in the heart of beats, we can go from here if you prefer.
Yeah. Yeah. Far far away now.
I will thank your council members, and I, my name is Ricardo, with our three W C M. Um, here to be with me is Aaron Crow, our director of wastewater, and our. New plan laser for you guys, Scott Clay. We were here back in May. Kinda talking more on the financial. Fine Peter Financial. And impacts on the rates for this sweet soda improvement project. Um, since then, just like we talked about, leave, you guys had a meeting with Camille and D F A. Uh, talking next steps, and. From that meeting. Um, it was kind of related to the council of the sweet sir, you know, this is, this is the process usually goes with S R F and Oprah. It takes a little bit of time, I get the whole yes, and then it's we get defining the scope, getting the financial administrator in, and the grant administrator. So this is a normal process, there's always some hesitancy, once we start getting into the actual numbers of the project. Um, but. You know, Cafe, trust us, we've done this multiple times, this is a normal process that we go through this right. And along with Plant Theater and both some of the heavy, even both. Both law, the bond council, I mean, you guys have a good team behind you supporting for this project. Um, so today, I'm gonna just call it cover scope, schedule, budget. Pretty simple. What do I wanna get out of this meeting, is simply. Once I finish this, I'd like the council to hopefully give us the green light, that being outside Q W as well as. Fine Peter Financial, Fine Peter Consulting and both law, to present the. The proposals that will be then discussed on yourself, and our ultimate goal is hopefully by the meeting on September eleventh. Attend again, and then have a vote and approve on the proposals, so we can actually kick off this. So we're we're at that stage from our side, we're ready. Just designing these improvements that the town is needing. Um, so. On the first page of the scope, we have divided into two divisions of work. Um, a quick reminder, the master utility plan that was put together for the Oakwood Grant. Um, included four alternatives, third number one was a wastewater treatment improvements. That included a lot of an equipment improvements inside of the existing wastewater treatment plant, as well as an expansion of. A new room where all your new state and electrical printers are gonna be living in. Um, alternative number two includes list station improvements, so that covers again, that ties back to the state up. Again, your cementation improvements for the plant. A lot of safety improvements, we noticed some of your list stations don't have safety cages, some floats are missing. Um, so some better, a lot of, I wouldn't call it T L C, but are needed things for the safety operation of the. List station, alternative number three. We're talking about your sanitary sewer network, um, part of the proposal we're presenting is having you. CCTV your sewer network one more time. And getting that information back to us, so we can analyze it and then present to you, the town, a report. With recommendations in terms of what we need to line, what we need to repair, or what we can leave in place. And lastly, the fourth one, which is a big one, is the regionalization. Regionalization is running enforcement, sanitary enforcement, or enforcement. From your existing wastewater treatment plant, four and a half miles west down the trail to OK. And we're gonna be picking up that flow and bringing it back to Sweets. Why did we do that? Reason for that is doing a regionalization gives you extra points in your review process, was S S R F. So. Division one, like I mentioned, inside consists of one and two. Um, to give you a perspective in terms of constructions, estimated construction costs for those two divisions. Alternative number one with a ten percent contingency, is coming to approximately one point six million. Alter number two, again, with a ten percent contingency. Um, just north of six hundred thousand dollars. Those are construction costs. And I made that clarification, because when we submit reports to P to S R F and Oprah. We don't include soft costs, what are soft costs, soft costs are design fees, survey fees, admin fees, construction inspection. Those come after a second, another line item, and then get the full product, I'm gonna get to our soft costs, if you just bear with me. We go to division two, division two is now, alter number three, now the number four. Alter number three, at this point in time, construction wise. Um, because it also includes not only CCTV for your sewers, but it's also lining some of this of your list stations to you. What we're trying to improve with that option is stop your I N I, what is I N I, I N I is unsinful infiltration, so right now, we're trying to control. It's not having your current wastewater treatment plant. Not treat. Um, stone floor, because it just impacts your capacity and you're rated incorrectly. You want your wastewater treatment to only treat wastewater, you don't want anything else mixed in there. So alternative number three, construction cost comes in about just north of a hundred thousand dollars. And like I said, number four, again, the big one, the force main construction product for that one. Is coming in with the force band the realization, just north of three point two million dollars. Okay, you add up all that. And you're approximately five point six million dollars construction. Again, construction, we're saying what would be to pay a contractor to do this work. Keep in mind, again, this includes a ten percent contingency on each alternative. Approximately just north of five point six mil.
Ricardo, could you repeat?
I'll turn number one with a ten percent contingency is north of one point six mil. I have exact numbers, but I'm kinda giving you this approximate. Number two is north of six hundred thousand dollars. We had three or four in this for sure, alternative number three is north of a hundred thousand, but does not include the CCTV. Again, the CCTV will be included into our soft costs, because we need that data to then present the report to the town. For then develop an actual project from there. And alternative number four, again, the big one, regionalization, is north of three point two million dollars.
Sure do you have.
There will be, um. Oh. Is that a good question? Mr. Moore, and if you allow me, go to the next page, we're gonna talk really quickly on the scheduling. Um, schedule is, um, coming up on us quickly, it's a, it's a large project, as you guys can expect, we are touching. Pretty much every component of your current wastewater treatment system, plus adding. New force main, new original list station, and the O K O system. Um, so we broke it up into two divisions, so you have your financing schedule, and you have your design schedule. Why are we doing that, financing schedule comes into play, because the town is looking not only from an poker ground of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Hopefully closing this round, or submitting it for this round, but then the S R F. S R F is a, is a tedious process, that's a lot of product. It's a long time. But before we can get to that point, there's other checklist that needs to happen along with the financial advisor, the municipal advisor, talking to O K O, and you. And the council as well, and the bond council, so. Starting on the financial side. The proposed schedule will be on August twenty eighth. There would be a bond and rate ordinance introduction. That is tied to the numbers of the construction, the software that I'm gonna be talking about. And then establish a public hearing on those proposed rates. There's a requirement to hold a public, a public meeting, because there's gonna be great impact, if they're traded with this project proceeds. September eleventh, that's the one I wanna bring in your guys' head, that's a critical date, that we believe in our end from our team. Um, that would be when the bond and rate ordinance is accepted. And then that's a general notice to proceed pretty much to the entire team. What does that mean from your end, you have your meeting, you pull the call, you pull the vote, you approve it. That is everyone on our side, financial plant theater. Uh, country or financial, kind of like consulting, R Q A W, the green light to go. We're moving, we're doing this project. Um, from our perspective in R Q W, that is a critical date, because we then need to release a survey, getting our mental involved. And possibly there's gonna be land acquisition associated with it, that's a process that we need to start either off immediately. Because of the regionalization efforts and trying to get to O K O. Um, and then the design efforts itself, i- it's, it's a massive effort in trying to get these project designed, but not only that. If once we get Oprah involved in this project, which we're hoping to get with Grant, there's a clock that starts at eighteen months. In those eighteen months from our end and the gene site, we have to design bid permit and. Have it ready to go within eighteen months, which is a tight schedule given to the fact that. Item, if I'll turn number one, you have to submit with them, can take up to a hundred and twenty days for one rather. So. Uh, I know I sound like panic apocalypse, but I'm just gonna emphasize that. If the goal is for this project to design bid next year, both next year, and possibly start construction into next year through the next one. We need to get some decisions made here in next month. We have a position. Going back to the financial schedule, as I mentioned, the next date will be October fifteen, that will be banned closing. And then the pass starts receiving the ban pro proceeds from itself. From that point on, really, the efforts on the. S R F loan closures will extend all the way through September, and that's where we come in at R Q W with a design access. We are proposing a sixty percent, ninety percent final deliverables to the town on both divisions. So there's that multiple stages where the town can provide input and provide feedback, anytime we wanna. Modify a design or change, we're gonna be those, that that opportunity or window, so sixty percent deliver from hand will be targeting. February seventeen, ninety would be about around May. Final delivery will be middle of July, and then by the end of that month, hopefully we're advertising, why are we advertising the end of July? S R F wants bids on hand thirty days before closing, so if we're closing in September, we have to have this. In hand thirty days before. In our schedule, we have accounted for float, we have assumed for. Sixty days. I say that with a caveat, because I just told you we're bidding in July, we need to close in September, right? Hopefully, within the first phase of that advert type thirty forty days, we get good bids, we can lock in. Great, we close S R F, off to the races. If unfortunately, the first one of this doesn't work, and our schedule is building a second rep. To provide better opportunity for town to shop around and get better. So, I know I kind of went over it, I. I wish I had my bond council team on the financial side, I could probably give you a little more details in terms of when. The ban needs to be advertised and needs to be publicized, there's some deadlines, intermediate deadlines. I just provided some of the critical milestones that we need to hit. Again, if you want to hit that schedule, loan closing next September. And then construction starting in the next year through the fall. Um, to give you a perspective, we are estimating about fifteen months of construction. Um, it's again, a massive project, a little overhaul.
For everything, including the regionalization.
Yes, our, our deal will be you have a contractor large enough. That obviously will be having multiple crews working on this. Um, when I, unfortunately, I think going to deep the book, the big one is obviously the four and a half miles force main. We are, we have two proposal alternatives, one running north. I guess. I, I saw on the map, to end up, we would. Strongly possibly not encourage that one just because of dealing with end dot is pain. And it would delay our schedule big time. The fact that the town owns. The trail, that opens a great opportunity for us to just do direction with drilling all the way to Oak Hill. And save restoration, you're not going to be anticipating the trail, and it just becomes a matter of figuring out really where your utilities are on that quarter. And that's where the next question comes to place where, um, when we looked at the G I S available in the county website. It doesn't indicate that. Hit and feature. Controls all the way to Oak Hill. So we had to assume about approximately five to ten possible properties. Where land acquisition we need to have. What is land acquisition if someone's asking is we need to get access to that property to for that pipe to live in. For the town to be according to proven Eastman. Which that takes a process, you need to get a buyer's agent, you can titles researching, appraisal, so again, those are S R F requirements. Um, again, time consuming and a fit.
Would they, would we be able to offer them as maybe an incentive for a, a homeowner that's a little reluctant? Would they be able to tie in that?
That could be absolutely an option that the town could definitely present, and that could be negotiated and doing the. After the appraisals presented, you can determine to present, hey, maybe. Bring up that opportunity, listen, you know. You can't, we don't want to pay that much money, but we can offer you this connection. You don't have to pay a service connection point, for example. That, that could be a discussion that definitely I should have, you guys should definitely have with the buyer's agent, you're being asked. Um, and just present that idea, hey, we're willing to do this to kind of facilitate or, you know, so that's what definitely not.
What was the regionalization?
Construction. And that is a new. Regional list station, list station in Oak Hill. And remember I was asking you, Pat, is it pretty flat? Because if it is, we're hoping to have a big enough station. And not only we're going to be looking at catching only Oak Hill, our goal hopefully since if this happens and goes through. Which we're, we want to, obviously. And we're going to size that list station, it's going to be enough that eventually we can catch also near. And those become now paying residents or suiteser that will provide revenue to the wastewater department.
Who does mayor? Like, it's all subject to this.
So we, you guys would be taking a lot of owners from Septic, which S R F likes, like they. Thumbs up from them, and that becomes another great revenue opportunity.
Do they fall, like, how do they fall as far, like, who's?
Nobody.
I, I noticed you're on your map, you, you, you do cross over into end dot.
Yeah, we years, yeah.
Approximately, where is that at? Like at the creek or, you know?
Based on the old information though, right Ricardo?
That is correct, so that's like, this is what we found on the G I S from Grant from the county.
I guess it looks like it would be right up the road.
If you truly own property, say, all the way to. There to fifteen, I can't see. If you really own all that there, I mean, you can proceed all the way through there, and then it just becomes a matter of we can hug along. The end are right away. And then if he sounds like a conversation, then we have to talk to end dot, but then that would save you my acquisition, right? We can just simply talk to. End up and say, hey, we can file for a knock occupancy permit, run from there all the way to Oak Hill, and then there's pre- there's certain restrictions that we have when it crosses things. Well, we're aware of that, we can deal with them when it comes to it, but if you act, if the town actually owns it all the way. To start thirteen, that is a fantastic opportunity for savings in terms of land acquisition.
We still have to go under eighteen and under thirteen.
You would, at one point then you have to cross eighteen to get to Oak Hill. I, I don't see another way unless. There, there's no.
Correct, there's correct. Well, you might be able to just cross eighteen, not thirteen, if you just cross eighteen right way at thirteen.
Well, you got to cross thirteen to get to the school.
I could also venture to say, if it act, you know. If your documents indicate you go all the way to thirty thirteen, that the western state road that you have with mirror. Um. It could also have an opportunity for us to size that towards them appropriately for future connections as a low pressure system from those. And residents out along that quarter, rather than how you, you know, spend more money to a new pipe. The pipe area is around to extend it, yeah. And then all you just have to do is talk to the homeowner and say, hey, we're going to be able to clean the connection. There's, there's ways to work around that. But we can plan for that future opportunity. How is it going? What do you mean? Well, so the question that was posed is how long, but what are the, I guess, the restrictions that we have point to the creek? So we have talked to our hard and poor group, we are facing three possible feet crossings. Um. At this point in time, the numbers of you will. We are providing a, a wetlands determination report. And from there, we're going to be able to see exactly, um. If truly what the wetlands map or online indicates is actually out here, we're going to have. Our technical team on here looking at investigation, um. The way I would think rather than my popular dive was other than known all the extent details would be, we would probably. Just bore underneath the creek, certain feet away from the edge of that wetland. And avoid at all costs and have a permitting through the D N R, right? Um, anytime you get into wetlands, then you start getting construction in the floodway, which again adds another ninety to hundred days. Notification period, so any chance that we have to not impact wetlands. And we can bore under it, that's probably how we're going to proceed with.
That was, I was going to ask that question, you going to go over the creek or under it? So if you answer that, so.
We're under is better in my. All the time, yes. And that's why I said, we believe the best approach. The trail will be. A directional drill system, again, less impacts to. The trail, which means the drill could probably stay open for the residents while construction is going on versus shutting down long term sections of the trail. Um, especially for a fifteen month construction period, um. So we, we're trying to kind of minimize the impact for the town, we'll provide this best. You know, thank you, but it's a little side. So now the meat, the big number that you guys are pointing to is your budgetary cost. So again, I've been talking about construction costs all this time. What we're going to be talking about right now are your soft costs. So these are costs that are going to be to prepare these plans to eventually get a contractor out to look at the plans, bid it. And get you under, uh, under contract, right? So on the design phase, like I mentioned, we have five items. We have design for division one, design for division two, we have permitting efforts and the other needs. So we have four items. Division one, again, in order of one and two, will be a four hundred fifty thousand dollar design fee. Although number two is a six hundred thousand. And feet. Which I want to point out, that includes almost about a hundred and seven, north of a hundred seventy thousand dollar. See, to have a CCTV done in your entire centers.
The six hundred includes that?
It includes then, yes, sir.
So let's pause for half a sec. So, for those that weren't here at the time, we paid approximately ninety thousand dollars. And have this done before, about four years ago. The product we received from that is. Subpar. It does not indicate well where things are located. There are discrepancies between lengths of pipe, between manholes. The, there's no map given with the product. More or less, we wasted ninety grand. Doing that project.
We're going to do that.
Could this be? Directly. Put on to our G I S.
The CCTV?
Yes, R S.
That could definitely be, I can double check and ask to the vendor that we've got that number from. I, I don't have the answer right now with me, but if I give you a chance, I can reach out to, we, but we use fluid waste. Or CCTV efforts, that's what we, we showed, that's the number we got. I can ask, okay, I can get back to you, that's okay. Um. Going back to the design phase section of the permitting, like I tell you, there's a big number because again, we have. Permitting for your wastewater treatment plant or your CGSP, which is the. Um, so moderate efforts, our impact are going to happen along the regionalization efforts. At this point in time, we are going to try to bore, but if we don't, we also included efforts in case we need to follow construction in the floodway with the D N R. So I'm, I'm getting into the weeds here, but it's all of the permitting efforts with a lot of agencies. Local and state efforts that take a lot of time and just. That was, um, and then meetings, like I said, we're planning on a sixty ninety final meeting with the town. Um, we also included, I think, I believe. Add a three or four additional just. Floating meetings in case the town feels like between meetings, we need to get together and talk about it. And so they're not specifically tied, tied to a milestone, but it's more like, hey, Ricardo, I need your team. In two, in a week, okay, we have it, let's do it, this is what was the problem. Moving on to the bid phase, that is a fifty thousand dollar fee. Again, we have assumed two rounds, we would like to keep it at one round. Um, we are going to proceed, we would like to propose a traditional design bid build, um, design bid. Build face, so we design it, get bid out and gets built. Construction phase, we have construction admin inspection, like I mentioned, it's a fifteen month project. Um, this is a number that honestly is whatever the town feels comfortable with. We have assumed. An eight, eight hour day every day, five days a week, um, inspector out on site checking on the work in the contract. If the town feels like this, this fee. Is not manageable, we are, we are open, there's flexibility against my point. If the town feels like, no Ricardo, we really only need you. I don't know, twice a week. Then we internally can have our guys walk out there, they, we're absolutely fine.
Which one was that? Construction inspection?
And admit, yeah, mainly inspection, mainly the inspection, yes. The admin really, it kind of stays set because that kind of covers like your pay apps. Construction progress meetings, any questions to contractors. The inspection number really is the number that has a lot of movement, depending on what the needs or what town really feels that. They need to have oversight of the contract.
So, really quick, you said on the bidding phase.
Yes, sir.
That fifty thousand, that's for, you worked it in for.
We have accounted for two rounds.
So if, if we do the first round of bidding, then get something we like, we go with it, then it's like twenty five thousand.
It's mo- most likely, I mean, yeah, if you want to call it half, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We just, uh, for projects of this size, really, we always go for two rounds just for, you know. We're engineers, we'd like to be conservative. And with the product this size, it's, we want to make sure we get the right contractor mainly, um, for the scope of this work.
And we can happy to set up contract to do like a price per bid or something like that.
So if we, I mean, they do the first bidding phase and we get, you know, some bids and. Maybe we don't like them, we can. Go to a second round, but then if we still don't like any of those, can we go back to the first round, pick that?
Unfortunately, state code, once you reject the lowest, most responsible responsive bidder. You have officially rejected that bid, and you, you have to publicly now start the plot.
Yeah, I got you.
These being public funds, the town will be utilizing their state code that we have to follow.
Yeah.
Certain periods of advertisement, number of times of advertisement. Um, so that's where we come in, we protect you guys, in that sense, we understand the code from the bidding phase. And that's, and unfortunately, once you reject it, it's officially rejected.
I got you. Understood.
Um, and then the last section really comes into your grant loan assistance, so grant administration again provided by Klein Peter. The sixty thousand dollars, the environmental review, which is requirement of rest. It's five thousand, five thousand dollars, labor stance assistance, again, S R F will probably require, not probably, will definitely require Davis Bacon wages. Um, A A S requirement, there's a lot of additional supplements that come with using S R F. Um, my computer is going to help with that efforts. District assistance and payout processing, um, we have presented ten thousand, when I talked to Mike, he said that is. If you want Mike to handle it, the town can handle it, they feel that they can handle the payout processing internally. Um, or you can just leave it on Klein Peter, they can handle it now. And lastly, if you're on a legal fee with, uh, both law or your bond council to kind of get that squirt away for this year. So all in, you're looking at about two million dollars soft costs. So, in summary, um, to do all alternatives. I said five point five, five point six construction to for soft costs, add those two, you're about just under eight million dollars. And that would be the number that you guys were, that's the number you guys were presenting on May. Um, by Sean Klein Peter, talking about rate studies. One thing to note is that I was talking to Sean this afternoon. Is. Those numbers are not quite accounting, does, he doesn't have a good accountant for. What expected revenue is coming from Oak Hill, which is something that he's pushing for. The council to start those conversations now. Because that's going to be a critical piece of information, because right now, as the rate comes in and study. Pretty much the sweets or residents are. Kind of taking the brunt of the rate increase. Without really not reflecting what the possible revenue comes in from Oak Hill. So what does that mean from your guys' end? Means that if we can have the conversation and start having those discussions with Oak Hill. Sooner rather than later. Um, there's a possibility that your rates, possible ratings will go down because now you have money coming in. From Oak Hill that wasn't included in the May analysis. Did I make myself clear? I just want to make that point because that seemed like a pretty important point. Sure. Um, and on the right hand side of that one is. General land acquisition service fees that we can provide, those are not included into the soft causes at this point in time. Reason we did not include them is we weren't sure perhaps. The council members have a better connection locally that they can use as a buyer agent or someone that they can come in negotiating your behalf, perhaps. Your town attorney can be willing to do that effort and provide that level of savings versus if. If you don't feel comfortable, you don't have anyone, we are willing to offer those services for that fee. Um, we, we put it to the side just to provide us a. Add on, it's called. And that's really it, that's kind of the high level. Um, oversight, not oversight, but an overview, um, that's easier progress, and like I said from the beginning. What we're trying to get out of today is hopefully answer any questions. There, there will be questions, we talked to Sean, Dr. Mike, they're also both open to meet anytime the council members are available. To ask any, answer any questions, but hopefully what we're trying to get from Tim White. Is get a thumbs up from the council saying, yes Ricardo. Go back to your team, put official fee proposals and contracts together. Submit it to the council, the council review, and then on that. Yes, sir. You have a question?
Yeah, do you need to go ahead and push?
Yeah, the last thing I suggest, hopefully once the fee proposals and contracts are under your review. And all questions have been answered. That September eleventh, we can have a meeting, vote in it, and get everyone noticed.
So. You guys probably have better handling for some reason. I'm assuming these are listed as alternatives. Like division one.
Yeah.
I'll be correct, that's, we're going to need to do that in case. That's correct. Sewer improvements.
So.
Plant improvements to the list station. Is. And we probably need this sanitary sewer network assessment. Um, but. So my question is, what is the impact? Of. Not doing alternative for legislation. Is it making a whole project? Pretty questionable because. Fabian?
I, I hate to generalize, but you would be jeopardizing the rate you can answer up most likely. Regionalization got you a lot of good score in your report.
Okay. So, so next my second question kind of moved, it was, if we take a regionalization out. It would, I would assume it has some impact on the construction.
Oh, yes, of course, yeah, but any, anytime you move alternative, it affects that. It, it's unfortunate that it's, it's kind of like the show only for this project. That is what S R, S R F is huge on, just. Getting system, like individual floating system islands and just kind of sort of regionalize it.
So, yeah, well, so I guess the question becomes. How, what, what we know from Oak Hill.
Right, they're still interested, but that's about the extent of it.
And we got that letter from, from you, so we appreciate that, but I think there needs to be more activists, in our opinion. In those conversations.
The other fact in all of this is. The meeting I was at prior was with. District thirty one house rep. Laurie Gosbribs, chairman of. Ways and Means for the House and, uh. Several other local leaders. And there's some pretty serious. Consequences to Senate Bill one that was passed. That will start in twenty twenty eight. John doesn't really have any, nobody really has any solid numbers on what that looks like right now. Marion City is slated to lose about nine million dollars out of the thirty four million dollar budget. And more or less, the the state reps are saying, well, just raise your local. Income tax instead. But that still doesn't offset or not. City Marion is handling in such a manner that they're saying the sky is falling. And so they're refusing to make any changes currently, so everybody's saying how. Their hands are tied, they can't raise salaries for police fire. Anybody because of what's coming down the road. True, you have to make decisions wisely with what you know might be coming, but it's all complete conjecture at this point. It was simply passed because Governor Braun said, I want to lower property taxes. Come hell or high water, he didn't care what the repercussions were, that's what he wanted, that's what they did. Well, and. Versus that is that it's gonna affect all the municipalities, including the schools. Mississippi City School says they'll be completely out of cash by twenty twenty eight. They're, they're anticipating cutting bus transportation for students because of Senate Bill one. So O K L is gonna be in a pinch financially after that. So they're not gonna have any more money to throw into a sewer system three years down the road. Than they do right now, so that is something that unfortunately plays in the favor of this project idea. But we're all gonna be in some hurt if they don't change the legislation. Basically, their idea was, we can make the system simpler and it'll help everybody. Well, might simplify the system, but it makes things worse, it's not the the proper solution.
Passes it all on.
Correct. Jim McWher is very, he's on county council now, he was Scotty auditor, he's been with school systems, very well versed in this, very articulate. And he he put a lot of good information forward. Um. That. The chairman for Ways and Means says he'll take back. It's his bill, um, I mean, he's not gonna go chop it down, if we're honest. Uh, so there's a lot of unknowns still with that, so that's a fact that we have to. Consider both for ourselves and for the school as well. We've not had a deep conversation with the school in a couple of years on. Any of this project. But the superintendent did say they are still willing to, you know, explore the option. Wastewater is something they're always gonna have to deal with, and they're gonna have to do something about. Uh, these costs help us kind of put a little more perspective on. What that's all gonna look like. The. Extension, the regionalization is a big piece from. S R F standpoint, they have said that. I mean, without saying they're gonna give us some sort of funding, they said they're gonna give us some sort of fun. It's a, it's a gamble because who knows what. The whole setup will affect that point. So there's a lot of unknowns that we're banking on. But we know we've got to do the first. Couple pieces of the lie regardless.
Well, one, two, burdens at least. And ultimately, also within those numbers, and Aaron, you can correct me if I'm mistaken, this. Um, one of those aspects is looking at your chemical loading. Effluent and see if we can get you re-rated, get you kind of that super. So that is one of the efforts we're willing to do on episode number one. Um, because currently you guys have a sewer ban because you're exceeding up to ninety eight percent. And so your capacity is which one? Our approach, which has worked, um, in a different project where it is. More not looking at the effluent capacity of it coming out of it, but more the the chemical loading of the plant. And projection it through a period and saying, well, wait a minute, really, is it? Has it been always underrated when it really should be overrated based on the type of chemical, the volume of chemical that we've been using yet? So that's one, within the numbers I've talked about, there is efforts. For us to kind of get those done, so hopefully get your needs out of me. Let me do a. A fair effort if you have the super.
What exactly is the super ban?
It it limits you to getting new conditions, really, I mean, it it pretty much states that.
Built a new home, it's like, hey bud, you gotta put.
Because your plant cannot, you know. So that's where adult ties can, unfortunately, all these flows are kind of. Except for regionalization, all the other three are kind of all interconnected because what we're trying to really is. Full is somehow be your other van. And really stop the I N I, stop that info coming into your plant that. This flow that you shouldn't be treating, you're wasting your money treating rainwater. That is not what the way.
That's why we're over the capacity rate, and you can watch it on the the graphs.
The, uh. The normal point for the plant is usually around ninety five, ninety seven thousand. So when we get, say, like a. Two inch rain. It shoots up to four hundred and. Almost seven hundred thousand.
How's that? So that, so that, for example, I think I know where you're going with the question, how how's that possible, right?
How's that getting into?
So that usually tells us that either the the Santer sewer network is up, the pipes in the ground, they're carrying. Sorry, we've been through the pool, but. Is in a stage condition that Jones have deteriorated. That now are not flush, but the offset to ground, so groundwater starts coming in.
The biggest in the collection system, the Chinese.
And.
And people that have put their.
Exactly. That is another typical problem that we have, is residential blind ties. Hands. That. That, you know, you're now catching, you know, the rain that comes from your roof, both on your downspout, your gutter, then your downspout, instead of going to the grass and not go to your whipper.
I know CCTV work, but what about some of this? You know. Smoke testing.
Yeah, are you asking if that could be added, if that?
Well, it it would need to be done, because. I mean, CCTV, we see so much.
So in the, we we've done a project in Doug, they're down in, uh, Green County. Where we essentially smoke test the entire collection system and then use that as a tool to zoom in. And CCTV those areas where we identify defects and for the council's benefit, smoke testing. That Pat was talking about, essentially block up two. You do, you block up a couple ends of your pipe in your sanitary sewer, you literally blow smoke into one side, it comes out. Usually through cracks in the sewer, or through illegal connections, through people's homes, there.
You just wanna let the residents know because they're gonna think that houses are fire.
Yeah, they're gonna leave connections and stuff like that, it was their house.
I mean, Indianapolis, for example, does charge. You wanna connect one, you're gonna, you're gonna pay. It is a hefty fee to connect to the.
Yeah.
To the sanitary, sorry. So all of those conditions, the pipe conditions, um, I know, was it bank, I know last time I talked to you. Exactly, I know, was it bank, those had the standing water, I remember you told me about.
Bank goes underwater, but so does the case lift station, it it actively pours in, I mean, just all the time, you can just watch.
So all these lift stations are there. Need to rehabilitate, rehabilitated through lining or just.
Well, and I didn't notice anything in there about, uh, decommissioning or.
Yeah, it's also included in part of the alternative. Like. One, or no, two, it'll be a third number two, I didn't think we had there. Because it's the same, it's, uh, so Pat is asking. One of the, one of the lift stations, case, right? Is your furthest east one, they used to be the lift station that pumped to Marion. Before you reverse the flow. Um, during the P, the P R phase, the idea was brought up of a decommissioning about one. And run a low pressure sewer, because you only have a handful of connections, I believe, in that area.
Not lots.
And that has been incorporated as part of the third number two in the P R, and that's still part of this project, yes. So. I just wanna bring the council members up to speed.
That we want, they all know what we're. So no way was.
Correct. We're working on a worst case scenario that we're gonna finance seven and a half billion dollars for this.
Through, um, impacts in increasing rates. And this is where I go back into the whole comment about. Having that conversation with O K L, because including that revenue will lower the impact of your rate increase.
Do we foot this entire bill or their grants that help like? I have no idea.
Oakra, it's a seven hundred, it's a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar rent. So there's no loans, so that's just, okay, give the money to you guys. S R F would be, I think it's a twenty five or thirty year loan. Oh, at a, at a certain, I don't know, I don't know the rate at this point in time. Um, I think last time I talked to Sean, it'd be full financing, so it's a. It's not your A double star rating for. And interest rates, but it's still better than you can probably get out in the market.
It's not like.
That's, that's the, in a worst case scenario, though, right, is we go back to pools. If they. As Camille positively talked, if there's money available for better financing, potential grant dollars, things like that. Those can all go into that factor.
So that goes back, I feel, so i- if you guys, I know probably you have a chance, but we, the report was scored really, really well, West R F. It wasn't ranked. But it doesn't mean that it wasn't in it. It gets tricky because we also have Oakra funds coming in. And S R F, once he says, okay, get involved, they won't rank them in the P P L, which is their product priority list. But Sleetster was scored really, really well, meaning you have a higher chance of getting a better rate. Um, it's just S R F wants to see silver dollars, doesn't wanna prioritize those projects, because you're the same, or you're also getting help from, you're not only relying on S R F.
And actually, maybe just, uh, kind of going off of Warren's comment, um, on the connections along that force main route. If you can pick up any additional homes, I can also offset it.
Yes.
Um, but, but those are additional users, additional rates that the the town would would be able to use. So that's just another thought, is where wherever you draw your force main alignment, more homes you can connect. It'd have to be low pressure sewer connections, so grinder pits. You know, to to deal with that pressure in that force main, but that that would also be a help to the town.
And again, to just reiterate, right now, we're not asking, I mean, if you guys don't like it, it's a green light for contract, I'd be more than happy to take it. Right now, really just wanna answer any questions that council members have. Um, we are open to another meeting, it does. If the town was able to hold, we can hold a team's meeting for more questions. But honestly, we're just hoping to get. Again, a green light from the council to let us now prepare a fee proposal and contracts. That then can officially be submitted into the town for consideration, and then, again. September eleventh is now the new critical date for us to. Have you guys vote on it, get signatures, and then we're off to. And sorry, but I'm sorry if I bored everyone.
No, no.
So, yeah, we believe, we believe it's a pretty impactful project for the town, and it will benefit quite a bit and. Hopefully solve a problem with current wastewater treatment has. And. And possibly provide new users, better revenue.
So we would, we would actually. Sorry, I'm so.
No, that's okay.
We would actually be expanding our wastewater thing, but.
Right? No, I really. We're overflow, so. Because of. Uh. Uh, division one, alternative one and two. We've got too much outside water coming over, we fix those problems, we're back within range. Correct, we need to take on the excess flow from O K L if we fix those issues.
We have looked at M R O, which is a multi group or, um. Each, you know, exactly, that's where, that's right there, we have looked at that information from O K L, the volume coming from O K L. Um, wouldn't need, wouldn't constitute the need to quite expand the capacity of it. As long as we solve the I N I issues.
Yeah.
And bring you back to only treating sanitary sewer. Um, our preliminary analysis indicates you guys can't take on O K L. And not go back into a sewer, because the worst thing you wanna do is, all right, we fix I N I, we're out of the sewer ban, we bring O K L, oh crap, we're back in. So.
If you special, it would be an option to add. Houses premiere. Did we, we? I thought we, was there some numbers we discussed about? The sewer? Bill a while back?
So that was in May, when we, when Klein Peter was in there, presented a preliminary rate analysis, right? And kind of walked you through the different.
This is what we should be.
In terms of your rate impacts.
Right.
Um, I I don't have any information from you, unfortunately. Um, but that was presented, and I think it also walked you through the different funding scenarios. Um. And that, that number, if you look at the top, it's around seven to eight million dollars for the construction. Project cost, so remember that includes construction and stuff, that is both together. Um, so that's what the funding agency would receive, and that's what. He, what, uh, Klein Peter, uh, your municipal advisor, if you guys wanna bring him in. Is projecting as a rate increase to cover the lump that we keep up.
So, O K L currently has their own wastewater tree, right?
They have, yeah, something, a form of.
They have, probably most likely, they have a small package fund that they just treat it on site and then just starts to whatever you have to. So we'll briefly pick them up system up to, or we. Commission the system and then build. This is where I was mentioning at the beginning, where we're hoping to not only size the station of O K L capture flows. From O K L near, but also size it, not only, sorry, not only to capture O K L, but also. Size it so we can capture any future connection from near. And then now those turn paying users to Sleetster.
Yeah, that's a version.
What, uh, what level of memory you need out of O K L? And, uh, I guess at at what station?
So when I talk to Sean Klein Peter, who is the one to lead, is gonna present your fee and contract with the, your municipal advisor. Um. Again, we have technically until September of next year to loan flows, so. We definitely need some form of, um, actually, I I have my notes, I know exactly where you, where they're gonna be needing.
The way I see it, the downfall is, we'll have to spend two million bucks to plan all this. But if we don't go the O K L route. Based on percentages, about one point two million of that. Will have been wasted if we don't go the O K L route, so out of that two million. Eight hundred thousand roughly is. Same project cost for. The other three portions. If if we figure percentage based for total cost of the project, that's where it's gonna run into, so we're looking to spend a million too. Hoping that O K L is gonna go through with this the whole way.
To answer your question, because I'm daily, you, the. What you'll be needing is a memorandum of understanding between Sleetster and O K L. And that would be sufficient evidence for S R F to say, okay, O K L's on board, you can proceed. And that would be drafted through town council lawyers. And I'm guessing lawyers from O K L side. And those discussions will be happening. And if the public has any questions, we can also count this for part of the Okra review, we can count it for her part of a recent rolls to Okra. Because they were asking us to have a public meeting. Regardless of these projects.
Is that, on this for O K L was even on here?
It should be the regionalization.
Oh, yeah, there they are.
Should sound like a three, four, something million. I don't know which version it was.
Hit up, this one. From Klein Peter back a while back.
Yeah, this is also one where at one point in time, we were thinking of like. O K L, the near, the near plus, one point in time. Which that involves not only having to force me to O K L, but now we're doing O K L. And then the lower pressure sewers to the residents, and then lower pressure sources of residents, plus a couple more that a little bit doesn't need edge mirror. Um, so, I don't know, that's the version you're looking at. Um, Tyler, but I don't think so. But for today's discussion is primarily force me to O K L.
Yeah.
And.
My confusion, as I've heard when I talked earlier today. So total project cost, based on the the financing information we've got in front of us to Sean. Is five point four million. He lists. I felt like soft, soft cost on here.
Well, I guess that's a question. Yeah, I don't see the soft cost on here.
Okay.
The Lucian rates, worst case scenario, a hundred and sixteen, but that's two million short on our financing number.
So there's another version of this study that was done, um. I can. Reach out to Sean and ask him to resend the rate study, and if the council would like to set up a meeting, we're more than happy to set up and.
I was just gonna flip back and add to the. So I guess my question is gonna be clear.
Yes.
Soft cost can, SRF alone, but soft costs as well.
Yeah, because they look at total estimated project.
If you look at, if you just said seven million over twenty years. Um, just go back to that, then you'd be, you'd be looking at monthly. Uh, per user, um, uh, about seventy bucks. Addition, addition, and that's not including any. Uh, inflation factor for increasing costs over the next few years, so.
And did we go with the, wait, so I remember kind of discussing this, there's RD, loan, fifty percent grant. Open market and SR, I remember the conversations we were having, but.
But I think the conversation wound up, the only realistic option was SR.
Yeah.
Yeah, SR is OKRA plus the current plan of the past per month. And like I said, Okra would be. Um, max, the goal will be to obtain the max in OKRA seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant dollars. And then the balance would be funded through SRF.
Now, so the, the seventy dollars, I'm just, and then, and.
Is that based on the seven point sixty five?
That would be on seven, seven million, so, I'm, I'm assuming, cause you add everything out, it's about seven and a half. We have seven hundred thousand dollar grants at fifty, which is just under seven, call it seven, just for. Easy math. So that winds up being about seventy dollars per current user.
And that is, again, Sweetser users. That doesn't include the revenue possibly.
That number could, so that number could be reduced by. Oak Hill, I don't think you can count Mary in, because you can't force them on.
Right.
Uh, and probably at a hundred and fifty dollars a month, nobody's gonna jump at it. Um, but, or whatever turns out.
Till they go to try to sell their house and realize that something doesn't.
Yeah, so. No one knows what the impact of Oak Hill revenue is, so. Um, the seventy is conservative.
How do you figure out what the impact from Oak Hill would be revenue wise?
That would something Sean would have to figure out, yeah.
You would figure out our current rates. For our flow studies. And then you figure out what their rate is coming out of the plants, coming out.
Yeah.
And then you basically figure out what the cost to treat that.
Yeah.
Subtract from what we, our average usage is.
Yeah. There's, there's.
And you made just another comment off of the, the loan term to, yeah, mess up offers. About thirty-five year for linear project. If it's like a package project, then they'll blend the rate, so it's probably gonna be somewhere in between the twenty and the thirty-five.
So that would lower.
Correct, it's gonna lower your impact.
So that, I think, and I, if I recall, I was thinking. Back at the time in the sixties, I would call that a. Or. Looks likely one of them, one of the factors, this, that also didn't. Hard to call, maybe that, that one sixteen did not include. Consideration of. Additional costs and inflation, because the change in cost and labor and such.
Am I incorrect that you're gonna have to raise rates?
Correct.
Like, like without this.
If we didn't do anything, we need to raise rates, because we.
Because right now, I would, not, not to interject in the conversation, but as you currently stand, you have your sewer. So you really cannot connect anything to your current system. So, eh, eh, you mentioned someone built one house, that like, can't connect, you have to put it up. So to fix that, you, you have to summarize alternatives, which means.
So we're technically an early band. Yes, because we did have one house come in.
This would be the monthly cost with no interest or nothing like that. If subtract the, it was seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand is the max we can get.
We got six point eight two five divided by two hundred and forty months, I did twenty years. So the monthly rate, the monthly cost, twenty-eight thousand four thirty-seven. Yeah, without interest, and when you divide that amongst all the homes, but that's not, also not including Oak Hill.
Correct. I just use five hundred instead.
Yeah. I got you, I was just trying to put some numbers in my mind also. Many homes do we have?
Some of those pay a higher rate.
Right, so that's like sixty-six bucks. Hmm, that's, well, yeah, yeah, okay. I'll say fifty-six dollars.
So I, I, yeah, I, I wouldn't. I, I hesitated, I want people to anchor on.
Correct. No, I know, I was just trying to understand.
I, I think it's, I think it's rare enough to say, if you just take our current residential rate, it would not surprise you, wouldn't get it. Gold just goes through, it would be tough.
Yeah. Yeah.
And maybe another.
I mean, that's definitely even.
Another assignment too is, I guess, my question is, I'm worried about the benefit, what are we gonna get?
I don't think we're ever gonna completely offset it, but if we're gonna have to raise rates anyway.
Well, you always have to raise rates, every five, seven years, you need to do a rate study, because there's awesome materials and they. You get a plant, and it would be an upkeep, right, so you always need to be doing a rate study, we, we're due for a rate study anyway. We need to raise rates. We're overdue for rates, that's a good.
Who does that?
But that, I mean, that's based on, you know, how many, how much, what's our flow, what's our users, how many users, what's our material cost, and like Allen and stuff that he's using all the time. But I guess I'm looking at. We don't even know Oak Hill wants to join us, all we have is this vague. Interesting, it's so vague and.
Well, and just to be clear, we did contract Klein Peter to do a reach that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's gonna happen, that has to happen.
So, but our, our rate study is also gonna include all the stormwater, right? Does the rate study?
Not really, they, they factor that out.
Rate, the rate study is just to say, how much is it? How much should we be charging? To, how much is it costing us to operate our plant in its current state, how much should we be charging?
Yeah.
Which will, which will be beneficial to us one, we're running a small deficit.
Yeah.
And we need to get that corrected. The two then would give us a better idea, once we have that, where this final number will wind up here for this project. Then we'll be able to start tightening, I guess.
On top of that too, just to add that. Those numbers aren't going, like, especially with construction cost estimates that Ricardo was sharing, those numbers. Won't be locked in until contractors will actually put a bid number to it.
Right.
Uh, you know, we, we do our best to make sure those estimates are fair, they're based on past bids, things like that, but. Well, I mean, and sometimes we, we, as we play the role of marketer sometimes, because during the pre-bid process, we'll start to reach out to.
Yes.
Potential contractors, get them interested, because the more competitive.
Yeah.
The better the bids, um, so.
Again, not to sound like a broken record, we're not wanting a full commitment from the council today. All we're just wanting is. A thumbs up, we're green, like a green light saying, yes, Ricardo, go back to your team, put three proposals and contracts together. For us to formal review, and then, again, with the hope that on September eleventh, we can get those planned. So, just, I wanted to clarify that one more time.
So if we do that, council will do that. When you come back.
Yes.
We don't have any financial commitment. Beyond what we've already did, what's our financial commitment to you?
Right now, once you tell me, yes, it's, it's just my time to put the people's on contract together. And then you guys, the council receives it, you, and then we can sit down, we can talk through them. If you feel then, when you see those final numbers, no Ricardo, I need your sharpened pencil, or no, it's good, or maybe we consider it part of. We can have this conversation, it's just, so you, so the council understands.
Just a question, but for the September eleventh day, so he's got us having a bond here, he introduced a bond, it's on our, it's. I said in order to hit the September eleventh day, you're willing us to, then we're going to bond with each other next meeting.
On the financial side, that's what I've been receiving from the bond council, I guess.
So that does put us under a agreement that. Well, and so the second bullet for him, September eleventh, counting us bond and rate ordinance, does that mean we have to have a. Rate, rate study has to be done, and we have to go with some kind of rate at that point. Schedule, he's got us introducing the ordinance on twenty-eight, and, and on first reading, and voting passive. Right?
So that would be my, again, if. I don't wanna play the, the head of a financial advisor, that would be kind of, of course, you're not here. I, I can ask the question, I can relay the question, I can transfer that back to the council, or I can pose the request of. Having the council meet with Klein Peter to understand, and the bond council is a lawyer. Um, I, I, I speak, I speak confidently on the design side for us to do the technical efforts to get this project out, this be prepared. Um, so.
The question that maybe you'd ask, um. Klein here in our bond castle is, uh, if that bond rate ordinance is the bond and rate to support the, the bond anticipation note. That would be the question. And I think Travis, that, that is what those dates are, not the rates to support the construction.
No, I understand, okay, yeah, I understand, but yeah, I mean. Yeah, I didn't.
Oak Hill doesn't have another school board meeting until September eight.
So.
I mean, even, even doing, I mean, even doing the band, even doing the band.
So that messes with the, uh, full timeline there. Because the superintendent will not enter into anything with that.
Until board, right?
Yeah, of course. Oh, man. So you're asking for just the nose to proceed, right, here's what you.
Yeah, so. There's some.
They don't wanna start spending their money. Putting pen to paper, if we're not committed to moving.
Right, that's understandable.
Right, yeah.
We are willing to do the effort to visit people's corner with all the vendors, that's, that's. Again, people on contracts for your consideration, but really. Past that becomes a freely various effort, we're on our side, not that we don't wanna help and assist Sweetser just.
Yeah.
And if we.
It's the reality of the condition, of the situation at the point that the schedule.
So if we don't, if we don't get to regionalization, who, who backs out, just the, just the, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant? Uh, or are we, are we losing? Looks dead.
Oak Hill should probably, SRF is the one that gets.
SRF.
Your, so our name gets worse.
Options, okay.
Which means your rates get worse and your funding. It affects, it really impacts your SRF side.
The variable too, was what Oak Hill is planning on having to spend in the next five years on their plant.
Yeah.
If they're gonna spend three million dollars on a plant anyway.
Yeah.
This is a good deal, because we're going to finance the project, and they're just gonna pay for it. Versus them having to go out and raise funding for it.
The worst, you're not gonna get them.
If they were gonna pay it anyway. I don't know, the status of their plant a couple of years ago was on life support, and so they made a patch temporarily. To keep them going.
I guess, I guess I'm looking at it like, oh, we're gonna be able to get that commitment from them is, is the, the, the revenue they love their. Also like of the treatment that we're doing, not, they're not gonna commit to.
Detroit not taking steps?
Then I, they're not gonna commit to the capital that we are going to invest in building a plant, uh, you know, their plant, they're not gonna commit.
You mean next meeting or at all?
Oh, I can't see.
If they're gonna have to finance three million dollars themselves to build a plant, why would they not partner with us? For us to take the capital.
I, I just think that's a big game, that we're, I think, I think that's the game.
So I was getting ready to kind of say, it was like, we're, we're absorbing. Their debt essentially, right, the town is.
Well, think about it this way, though, you're either gonna absorb it this way and they pay for it. Or you're gonna absorb it when they add it to your property taxes anyway.
Yeah.
Because there's no more money coming from the state, so it's gonna come from us anyway.
Yeah.
It could be considered an unfair burden to Sweetser, because at that point, Swayze and Converse aren't going to be. Equally yoked in that cost.
Yeah.
But again, if Oak Hill's paying for it. I don't really care what happens to Converse and Swayze, if Oak Hill paying for this portion of the project. Allows us to get better financing for our part of the project, that was where this all started. Kind of like Ricardo said.
Yeah.
Oak Hill's a showboat in this.
Yeah.
They benefit, we benefit.
I don't disagree that they benefit, we benefit, I just have not seen any evidence from them at all in this conversation, it's all been us. All been us, when have they ever come to a meeting with us, when have they ever sat down and talked to us?
Well, we went to them, we sat down back when we were at Triad. And at that time, I mean, let's, let's be honest, if Triad could sell the project, I think, uh, I think Aaron and Ricardo can.
There's been, but there's been three, three administrations at least that have changed, that's what I'm saying, I just, I just don't, I have no faith in.
Travis has been through this before. So he's, he's been on the.
Philosophistic about it. I'm a little skeptical about the. Of the. I don't know that, I'm a little concerned about raising the rates for the residents, seventy, eighty dollars, whatever, even, even thirty, forty dollars. For something that is not necessarily gonna benefit that many residents.
But, even if we say, you know, we don't do Oak Hill at all, right? Just hypothetically speaking, their rates are still going.
But, but if their rates went up ten dollars, that's definitely insane, like, oh, seventy-five dollars.
Yeah.
So cut that in half, though, so we're still gonna go thirty-five bucks.
Yeah.
On top of whatever, we're gonna go up anyway. So we're still gonna end up at a hundred and fifteen regardless. So the, the question becomes, if we can get Oak Hill onboard project. And finance their fair share.
What steps do we need to take to try to? Talk within the. How many of these people do you? One.
I would skip Franklin Township rep, because he was against it to begin with, he was the only one that voted no.
I know them very well. I know them. That's his name. Yeah, that thing. I just, I, I don't know, I mean, I'm not a motivational speaker, but it's, you, you, you have to go over there and kind of present like, hey, you're. It's six and one, it's half dozen, uh, you, you wanna tie into a public sewer system? Or do you wanna just continue to dump money into a, into a, a septic hole that's, that's.
Present if like it's.
Maybe, if they, if this project happened, do we have any idea at all what we will be charging? What their monthly.
That would be a, that'd be a client figure.
I think we'd have to have the information, I'm on the school board, I'm. I'm gonna want that.
Yeah, they're gonna wanna know what their portion of payment is gonna be. I mean, I would wanna know.
Yeah.
Well, their portion of payment would be three point two million financed over twenty and seven years.
And they are, as a, as an outside customer, you can charge them a, a, an outside town rate, there is some. All that, but again, I really highly doubt that you're gonna get them to agree to finance the capital. So Travis, because right now, the state, we get a rate from the state that says you could charge us, this is how you charge a school. Yeah, like, like. For student and.
Oh, church.
Yeah.
Is a customer.
Yeah.
Outside, outside certainly have a, we have a rate.
And it's, it's based on, do they have a warning kitchen, how many students?
But I mean, we have, we have, we have rates based on. In, in, in town, based on, but because they're outside of town, we could, we could theoretically charge them.
We're, we're using the same rate.
We're using within our instruction, but we could set a higher rate, and be justified because they're outside of town. So, what I'm saying is, there are some, there's state. But I guess, I, I'm, I'm questioning if they're gonna.
But I guess I I'm 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 questioning if they're gonna pay. If we go to them. For the treatment piece of the sewer, I understand that, I don't, I don't know that they're gonna. I don't know that they're gonna pay for us to get it there. That's what I'm questioning, that's what, that's what I wanna talk to them.
Yeah, even if they don't, though, like, uh, the amount that they will mitigate. Our rate increase, I think, will be helpful at least.
It 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 will, it it will somewhat, I I also also be, I would also be hesitant to think. Yes, eventually, some of those houses along the way could become customers, I wouldn't buy them, I would not. I wouldn't think, again. They have to be a failing sewer, it has to be three hundred feet of the line, things like that, so you gotta, you know, it's not gonna be instant, you can't go, okay, with with that line here, you got. So yeah, you can't say, ah, we're gonna grab, you know, ten customers, and I'm sorry. Ten, ten accounts at eighty bucks a month is not gonna make. Any bank in our, in our, in our wastewater tree. Right, and that's, that's based on our basic, right, that's what I'm talking about, our other customers make.
We go, one thing I. Dismantle this, if we go to them, they're gonna have to spend three. One something anyway to. Put in a new plant. And we go to them and say. Invest that with us and pay us every month. Why wouldn't they just say, oh, that's the option, we'll just build our own plant? Why are they gonna, why would they wanna spend three point five million to take on a higher monthly bill?
I think, I think because even if you get, even if they build a new plant, they're still gonna have to maintain that plant.
The risk of they fail again, you have fines associated with it.
I mean, that that was, that was the cell that we talked to them seven, eight years ago, it was like, they'd have to have an operator, they'd have to run it and maintain, we would maintain.
And and I don't think they're shooting for being like, oh, yeah, sure, sign us up, but I mean, I I think it's.
Right, and that's my, that's my skepticism, I'm not, I'm not saying them against it, I'm just thinking, I think we gone way down the line without actually really having discussion.
So Kyle, thank you. Just trying to make sure I. If we can get them to put any capital.
I don't, I don't even want capital from them, I just want them to pay for the cost over the lack of the love. So I'm not asking for our front money.
So that might be.
If we're gonna finance the total.
So would you be thinking about having a higher rate with terminal load and then have it reduced once the loans paid off?
Once the loans paid off, yes, the the rate could change.
Is that a hook?
Yeah.
Is that, is that the appeal?
Because if they're doing that, we're not out anything, but we're getting the better grant dollars, the better funding. Like, yeah, so we can charge them.
There's still walls, there's, there's still utility regulations that are involved, right, you still have, there are reasons, or you can't make up.
Would would climb Peter be able to track that down for us?
I would imagine so, you can reach, we can.
Again, we need to talk. That that he needs, he needs to be involved in this.
And Sean did know that he. Wanted to bring up to the council's action, sooner you guys can bring him on board, this or definitely wants to be involved in his conversations with. Oak Hill, because he. As we all know, it's a, it played a big role.
I think we've been bid us to go to them and say, this is what your monthly. payment would look like.
Do you know, I mean, have they, I mean, do we know what they're doing?
In regards to.
Their plan?
They're currently paying a, paying a contract operator. Plus the general maintenance guy trying to get him licensed. I mean, we were paying. Thousand a month? I mean, they have a general idea, they being superintendent.
Yeah.
Two years ago, the whole school board, which I believe are all the same members. Currently.
We would need to take them hard numbers, saying this has been.
Can we, can we get those hard numbers, do you think, by September eight?
You wouldn't know that they have bids in the end, well.
Yeah.
Like, it's a true hard number, hard number.
What about those, like, kind of like you gave us, I was like the ten percent contenders.
Are you using our numbers you're talking about, or?
Just having, having Klein Peter come up with.
I mean, Klein Peter, we have to write all the numbers I I we shared with the council. Klein Peter, this is part of the pre-communication we had last week. I thought, hey, guys, that being Sean and Mike and Brenda. These are what we are estimating for construction costs for soft costs, and then Klein Peter took that and then is using that.
So, so maybe the term hard number is.
Yeah.
But it had to be an estimate.
That that's how we present it usually, so.
Estimated construction cost, estimated project cost.
Something we show the school.
Here's the analysis, here's where we think, here's where we think. We could go to their meeting on September eighth and present it to them. But.
At the end of the day, we've been making significant progress.
Yeah. Well, I mean, if we're, I mean, looking at the financial schedule, right, they're talking about bond anticipation, a bond rate, and then what introduction, and it's for, that's for the band, right? So that's, that's to tell investors that we're gonna, we're gonna issue a bond participation, right, and they're gonna, they're gonna jump on that, they're gonna look at our. They're looking at our ratings, they're gonna look at our revenues of our treatment plan. They're gonna wanna buy, no, but that's, they want that guaranteed. That's a tight schedule, so.
Um, let's be honest, there's no way we can stick to that schedule. Not having a meeting September eight.
Yeah.
There's, there's no way to. To get a, any sort of commitments from them without talking to them individually.
I think that's problematic, I don't think, I mean, if you're asking. About the. There, you're just gonna wanna draw up a contractor, right?
I mean, we, we wanna proceed, we wanna keep exploring this, the next step being with the school. But it comes down to. One way or the other, we're going to proceed with the project, it just depends if it's the five-five for the. Uh, three, one, whatever.
So then this part of it needs to proceed regardless. What, what was, what, what they're asking for.
Alternative one, two, and three, we, we, we can definitely, we know we're gonna proceed with those, right?
I mean, you guys know where we're at.
Yeah.
So.
We just can't commit anything to Oak Hill.
Well, and part of, part of the contracting too, that we can do, the way we set up the structure, present the town. And we've done this before, when there are kind of design items that are more in question, like the regionalization effort. Is we can consider those like alternatives. In the contract, so it can be essentially like, yes, please proceed with the items that we know we're gonna do. Uh, but hang on tight, and then it really just gives the town the option to like, once you've had that. School board meeting, once you've got a little more firm comment from the, the school, then you can authorize us to proceed with the regionalization efforts.
And part of your building out a contract, will that be detailing in the areas of the division of work where. We can reduce some of that scope, like with the construction inspection and things like that?
So our contract will only cover through bidding services, because we don't know who the contractor is, um. We don't know the contract times, you know, meaning we've had estimated, you know, Ricardo put together eighteen months. But that's an estimate, during the design process, we'll actually consult with contractors. Say, hey, we're laying this many linear feet of pipe, how many days you think it would take to shoot that, or. Equipment at the plant, what's the lead time on, well, screw press, or whatever it may be, and then we really build a reasonable. Contract time schedule. Like essentially the, guys were talking about in the earlier. Reasonable substantial com- final completion dates, um, and then inspection is based off of that, right? And how uh much need you have.
So are we still pulling the full two million bonds upfront?
No. No, not all of that is bonded. So you, you're, and I actually wrote that down in my, my notes too, you're, you're, the ban. That you'd be securing would be everything in the design phase. Uh, going back to Ricardo's table there, and bidding phase. So the C A, construction admin and construction inspection are not. Paid for out of the van.
Grant loan assistance?
No. Yeah, the grant, so the grant admin. Uh, costs. I believe, but I I felt, I don't want to speak for Klein Peter, but typically those are paid out of Oprah, like the Oprah grant dollars. Yeah.
Yep.
Dispersment assistance, sorry, you guys may have said it, dispersment assistance is not, that's all construction phase fees, and those are not.
So everything in the design phase and the bidding bits will be covered by the body of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. On that, uh, tighter schedule.
About this earlier, like, whatever that number is, if we decide not to do. Alternative number four, because Oak Hill says, no, we're not interested. There's no recuperation of that money.
Correct, of the design fees associated, but no, but you're not really committing the public construction side. Until you go down to that SRF one quote that Ricardo's talking about. September of next year, once you have bids in hand, you gotta know what the actual dollars are.
Gotcha.
You know, um, and at that point, you know, that's when you would have hard numbers to bring to Oak Hill. Right, hey, we know it's the estimated four million, but actually bids came in three point five, here's your actual rating.
Yeah, so how, how soon would that memory? Do we need to be interdancing between us and?
I mean, as soon, obviously, you would, the town would probably bring in a, find Peter, if you pay assets, the questions that those discussions will kill. Are positive, then, since it becomes one of you have this higher council or a lawyer, or maybe your town attorney can probably prepare.
I mean, that's, but that's not like under a deadline.
SRF just need that prior to loan, if more of your guys than than Tupper's.
There's no, so we don't need it by September eleven.
No.
No.
MOU is not needed by September eleven.
This is small, this is small potatoes, but compared to what we're talking about. We, we paid you up, we got a grant for thirty-seven, thirty, thirty.
Correct.
So. What, of what, all the things we're talking about, and you're asking, what's the nine, when, when, what does that thirty-seven cover?
So there's a, the original center we currently have with the town. Covers efforts to present a master utility plan we can prepare for the sanitary and the storm side for Ograu. And that's kind of, that's, we've already submitted one round, we got comments, we're working to the round of confidence right now.
Okay.
And then. Once we get it through that review coming and get approved, that pretty much finalizes that contract.
Okay.
With us and the town. And that was the establishment of that contract requirement.
So what you're asking us to, the council approves tonight.
It's just.
Is a. Is is the preliminary to a new contract?
Correct, because now we're going from the preliminary engineering report phase to actually design. We're actually gonna say now. Put a fee proposal in the contract, that hopefully the town will vote and approve. But but then put plan sets and specifications that then can be used.
Be like a road project, and they, they come, they make, they bring these estimates and say. When you give us a, or they come with this idea, propose, and we say. Counselor says, okay, bring, bring it, bring us, bring us a contract, that's what they bring it back and say, I think it's gonna be this, and here's our, here's what we'll charge you best consultants. Engineering consultants.
Yep.
Is that kind of the phase we're in?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're discussing our consulting fees for the design phase of this project. So again, to ultimately. Paying the fee from a new dream site, so then what you guys are given is a deliverable is a plan set, a plan spec, and a fee of cost. Um, which then you can use that and bid out for contracts. That's, that's, to boil it, really boil it down, that's what we're talking about right now.
So, and I'm sorry, I didn't leave.
It's okay.
I'm not very smart either, so you bring, we authorize, they authorize it tonight, okay, and you're gonna bring back.
We're gonna bring back a fee proposal and an agreement.
Yeah.
So then, the town's gonna review. And the town looks at it, come back, we can talk, say, no, Ricardo, you're good to go. We put sandwiches in the contract, that's our book, that's a source, that immediately I can release my survey team, commence our surveying the project. My environmental team. I can start working design, as well, actually start working towards the deliverables of plan sets and specifications. And start working towards that September or July.
So do you have your own surveyor, or do you contract that out?
We have an in-house surveying, yes.
Well, we wanted a specific surveyor. Chalks in the room, I gotta. Throw it out there for me.
With the.
I'll pick it up to my director for that.
With the televising as well, we've had a company that's come and offered things for D P R S. Someone would like to work in the future as well.
We can get a quote from them, again, we, we request a slip waste, but we can definitely, again. Today, the council is not going to go into any of the numbers, we're, we're, this is just to present. First time scope of what you're kind of tackling this part.
This is covered under our current funding, through you guys?
There, there is no cost to the town to tell them to proceed tonight.
You're correct.
We're just committing to them, we wanna move forward with the project, and we understand they're gonna spend time and money doing it. They're not gonna bill us for putting a contract.
No, no, we're not, but we're not gonna spend.
Look, just double check, just making sure. That's ten thousand dollars. Yeah, with no dollars on the line. They're taking the risks for knowing the existing relationship to start that process.
I guess, just to make sure. Council authorizes, bring it back.
Yes.
We're not under any obligation to sign and accept it at that point.
Tangibly speaking, that's correct, yes.
But the longer we wait. Those rates would only be good for.
Well, it also delays everything else, though.
But yeah. There's a longer. Not to put it lonely, the longer you delay our commencement of efforts, the longer delays. When you can kind of close your loan, when you can start up the construction, so.
Well, and so we're up, where I'm getting hung up in. If the entire project. Building to get a loan. So substantially hinges on regionalization. And we don't have, and we don't know if that can actually happen. Then how could we make it?
Well, we can get a loan for the two point three portion of the project. Correct.
Open market.
Right.
Through full fine, through SRF full finance.
Right.
It would still be through SRF, using their bond rating, their.
Okay.
Double A or triple A, honey. So you'd be able to get better than market rate.
Get better than.
But we're no longer gonna be looking at grant money, we're no longer gonna be looking at special financing options for uh an extra. Touch or blessing from. The people we're working closely with now because of that score.
And then. Did I understand that that would not endanger our Ograu field?
Correct.
That's still, that's.
As long as the total project still meets the. Percentage requirements. I don't remember what those are off my head. But but if we're gonna get seven hundred and fifty thousand, we gotta spend, say, a million five, I don't remember if it's a thirty-three percent matching or what that is. So we still have some requirements from that side. But we're meeting that still with the project.
Set regionalization aside, let's assume for sake. That's not, that doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. The cause. We have time to work through this. So then, still do a bond anticipation note. For the early portion of anyone in SRF, that's the way they did last one, right?
Yeah, when we put the one, we did, we did a van first, and then we got the SRF, because when you're, when you're getting ready to a bond. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The current wastewater treatment.
That's where a lot of our diagnosis comes from. Is how things were handled by the contractor and the engineer when we originally built the plant. There are things, as we're all aware of, that we're not done like they should be. As built that are missing, lots of crap that went on, that the town got screwed. And so that's where we know we have fixed some of these issues. Unfortunately, that burden's not left on us, because the contractor, the engineer, the electrician. Didn't do what they said they did. Or should have.
And that, and that has been contributed to our. Continuing struggles to have the rate to keep up.
Right.
A lot of repairs, pumps, things that just. You know.
And if we're honest, the operator at the time loved a lot of things alive and.
I can I can speak from example. We have another project we're working where. It's not a wastewater plant, it's a water treatment plant that was put in. It's a small community. Um the plant was put in operation and. Late fifties, early sixties and they ain't touching so. Did like last year. So they're at the point where they pretty much need a one hundred percent review, like they need a whole brand new building. New tanks, new equipment, because they let it sit for over sixty years. They put Band-Aid fixes on the way, but. If you have holes in your roof and your foundation is coming up your wall, then you have leaks in your tank that become a bigger issue than a Band-Aid fix. It it's a it's I just share that in the sense that it's a lot of communities are clean duties. Paints.
Yes. And and maybe call and answer some of that gun shyness. I mean, all all we can do is talk a little bit.
Yeah.
But like we can point to the community where where like we we've heard. When I first met Pat at a at a conference, the the word that he used was we want somebody who will fight for us.
Yeah.
Um I can tell you a few examples of working with communities since like twenty twenty, twenty eighteen. Where like we we want to see it not just be like a project, but to be a actually a success for the communities. I know that people can, but like. Really, we we wanna make sure the funding is there. We're not the financial advisors, but we wanna make sure those bid docs are tight in a way where. Contractors love it, you know, and they wanna put a good bid on it cuz they're working with a good engineer. You know, and we wanted to kind of lower than estimates. Um so. Try not to get green skate me, but like.
Yeah.
I understand that 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 has happened and that's a hard thing like over. Overcome and also acknowledge some of the risks here, right? Travis has been bringing up like that regionalization effort. That is a risk. Um and and sounds like, you know, there's a lot of historical knowledge. You know, in past endeavors too, so.
And and we are welcome to participate in this conversation and support the town. And I'm not saying that if we wanna feed, we we wanna see the town succeed, so. You guys don't have to go into that conversation quite a lot. You can bring us. A supporter.
Like to the school board meeting, the.
Absolutely. Just let us know.
Yeah.
There's no doubt about that.
We know it will help, especially.
You know, you guys don't have to file on in this discussion, bring us.
So. Make motion release with no cost. Expected from us for the for the next phase. We gotta move ahead.
I think that was a motion to.
Just hey, just real quick, I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
You're sure. So if we get behind schedule, so for instance, you come August twenty eighth, maybe we're not ready, you monitor it or whatever. Because we 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 do want to. May maybe Oak Hill's on the fence. Sure, like, well, we need to discuss it or they need to have a couple meetings about whatever. So we get behind schedule. What does that do? What's the problem for us? Is it just the whole thing moves behind schedule? We we miss.
This looks like a advantage to move quicker.
Yes.
Cause I think I think this.
I think I've got it and.
Yes, and this is the schedule based on getting fine loan closing by September and this year's in twenty twenty six funding. So if we get behind that.
It's another.
Twenty twenty seven funding.
And another thing to keep in mind is, you know, you know, we're gonna be between broker, obviously this year, but if. For some reason, something tied with Ogra ties, which is like, I know Ogra's only seven fifty, other bigger pine. But Ogra established, I think it was a couple of months ago now, if you're getting projects. That S R F funding, we can only go to round two of the year, meaning it's in the later part of the year. So now we're tying if we can hit the window this fall. We're pushing to next fall. And possibly loan closing a year after that.
It 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 just starts pushing it.
Yeah, it'll eat into your Ogra. A lot of it will actually boil, not only just put the designer pinch, but for the Ogra project Ricardo mentioned the eighteen month timeline. That's design, I mean, I don't know if it was Ricardo, yeah, we go work February sixty percent notice proceed. To October, I mean, we have. Nine months of design.
Yeah.
So move that nine months into that eighteen month window. And now you're telling your contract and you've got to get done in nine, whatever that product scope is. You kind of painted at it. You're looking at like a three million dollar project to maximize your Ogra. Uh the scoring, you know, that's a seventy five percent local match, which is the maximum number of points you can get.
And when we cut the plan here, the way we envision these divisions of work, division one, S R S and Ogra funding, division two, only S R. We wanna keep Ogra kind of tight on the leash on what's division what we want to open to.
All right, Kyle, reword my motion makes sense.
I believe Matt made a motion. To accept or to deliver a notice to proceed to R T A W for the wastewater. Treatment project. That's the word.
Well, I heard you say.
Is that a second pilot?
Yes.
It's like. Motion for Matt, a second Tyler for those notice to proceed to R two A W. John, would you call roll?
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
All right.
One.
On.
Hi.
I.
Travis.
Yes.
Motion here.
Thank you, John.
So work harder on the first cards and give us. A ladder card. I'm gonna go be on my neighbor's door now and like around.
Let's get my so we will all think like around. Yes.
Or chat in a regular.
You know, mountain public.
We're a bit too real quick.
So September eighth. Sunday. That's also in there. It's a busy.
Yeah, obviously, we. We. We won't. I guess we have a little meeting here.
School board meeting in time around?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll just.
We need to.
I I we could also ask them to schedule a public works meeting. That we could all get together outside of a regular school board meeting so that we don't fall down. It's their normal agenda.
Yeah.
They'll say it's also like, do we wanna just? Hey, guys, town council is here. You have some money?
Probably not.
Need that.
C C M G works just to start Friday to talk about that. Uh everything else I'm pretty much gonna skip. Uh. Alan will start tomorrow building out our equipment for Robert. My brain is shot. Yeah, public access, streaming, all that stuff. So he's gonna start that work tomorrow. John, I'm gonna push your code update special.
Yeah, right. Well, I thought I'd show, can I get just a real brief?
Yes.
In thirty seconds. Okay, so I've been through the whole thing. Um the good news is it's I think it's pretty good. Uh there are a couple of things. One of them we already discovered, I don't think it's. Maybe it's been fixed. Uh the districting. You know, they did include that in this and. I did send in the ordinance where that was repealed. But it's not reflected. There are a couple of other things like that. There's liquor. There's a thing where we. That you you should liquor permits. That's that's. Needs to come out. Generally, it's pretty good. There's there's a couple of what I thought I'd do is I'll send you guys a summary of what I found. I think I think some of the report we can send in to them, you may have to ask. Uh generally, I think it's pretty good. I maybe found like half a dozen things.
Have you sent everything we've, I mean, how far?
So that's up to the end of.
Twenty three.
Twenty three.
Okay.
Yeah, so I need some twenty four. I think maybe they don't have the last orders from. That came so late. I don't know. That's that's. Uh budgeting um plan, I have had initially meeting deals here. By. Book two. And first meeting September twenty fifth of the care of October.
Are they giving any insight into changes?
Um I didn't get in in. I did not get that far. Ref you ref.
You might.
That I will.
Connect with Jim Nickworth.
Okay.
He's done a lot of upstate county work on that, made the specialty. Again, the gas city is looking at it as though. Let's wait and see what comes of this before we say the sky is falling, whereas the city of Marion is in a lot of panic. I mean, they literally, it was it was intended to be the mayor and they brought the entire city council in like.
So they're thinking. Do you know where that number came from?
That's basically.
Twenty five percent.
They they paid a lot of money to bake pill it for a pretty promotion or a pretty presentation. I I wanted to say that and see how much did you pay for that presentation, but I didn't.
Any of some.
Oh, B Z A, sorry.
So I got one thing. So the B Z A has a in September eighth regarding a. Cell tower permanent if somebody wants to put up along the switch trail seven hundred west. And it is.
This is the same number they were in the bill that are.
No.
Okay.
Well, it could be.
It it might be. I I bet this is the details on it, I guess. But.
They didn't like our.
What's another company? It's this is where it's gonna be on the map. I it should impact the horizon, so. Give us better.
Yeah. Yeah. Not to walk around like.
You're supposed to. You're supposed to get paid for this.
If you get. There, but just it's just an acquire, so it's. Monday night at six o'clock. Eighty, just.
But this.
On the other side of seven.
It's on the other side of seven. So they're they're put on there in Congress. Something on there. Near they're calling it the near town.
Is it on the? West side or the east side?
On the west side of.
South of the trail?
Yes.
Perfect brother, play my.
Well, I guess anyhow, the Jones names. And that was the thing I tried to say. There's another one that's. Some guy.
I think like our, I think the company was just trying to find somewhere to put it. Probably multiple companies. Out bidding for it.
Yeah.
So it could be a different one that.
We don't even look at. Didn't think that we would have any objection or anything, would we? There any reason to be?
No, I'm all for it. Are they also discussing it to vote that meeting?
There is a. There is a special exemption because they the ground that eighteen twelve is. When the state bought is owned.
Tell them.
Agriculture or agriculture when they need an exception.
The previous cell tower thing was telecab.
So who is? Is there a lot of opposition to that?
To what? Cell tower or?
Eighteen twelve.
There are some, there are some people that live in neighborhoods.
Motion to.
Yes and no. There's so just so everyone's aware, there's a lot of. Pot stirring going on with my understanding related to eighteen twelve. They're more or less area plan. When I was told area plan is trying to stop eighteen twelve happening here. So just keep that in mind. We've had our issues with area plan in the past. We have one point to talk about. Leaving area plan. There are other municipalities that are talking about that as well. Because they're tired of the. Way that the county is operating. Area plan. We really don't get much benefit out of it. Doesn't cost us anything, but we're tied to them. But that's something that we keep your ears to the ground on for. Issues with area plan and then county commissioners.
I'm moving away. This is your moment.
You already did, right?
I already did.
You gotta redo it.
Yeah.
Oh, for crying out.
Travis got it.
So.